Call a regular meeting of the Pennington County Commission to order. Just to remind you that there's agendas in the back of the room, speaker request forms in the back of the room. Ask you to silence any cell phones or pagers that you may have. And we will start with a moment of silent reflection followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Haddock.
I pledge allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Haddock. Next item is to review and approve agenda, and I would ask that whoever makes that motion to pull item 18A from the agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion from Commissioner LaCroy. Is there a second?
A second.
And a second by Commissioner Ross Connect. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent calendar.
Holly Hennings.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of May 4th, 2021. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization hearings from April 2021. Number seven is to declare the items on the list presented, plus any last-minute items, as surplus for the purpose of being auctioned, and to authorize buildings and grounds to solicit quotes and sign an agreement for auctioneer services for a surplus sale, and to authorize advertisement of that surplus sale. Number eight is to acknowledge Dr. Catherine Johnson's resignation from the Planning Commission to be effective June 30th, 2021. Number nine is to declare one Kenwood UHF repeater asset number 4679 as surplus for the purpose of disposal or donation. And number 10 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of April 2021. And at this time, I respectfully request the board pull number five, please.
Pulling number five. Any members of the public wishing any of these items to be pulled from the agenda? Seeing none, any Commissioners wishing to have any other items?
Number eight.
Number eight. I have number five and eight, so can I have a motion to approve six, seven, nine, and 10?
So moved.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Haddock.
Second.
To approve those items. Second by Commissioner LaCroy. Is that what I heard?
Yep.
And a second by Commissioner LaCroy. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item five.
Item five, we wanted to pull the minutes off to make sure that we get a corrected version approved by the board. The planning and zoning item O did not include the resolution that is required, so the publication will be done properly this week, but we just wanted to make sure the board was aware that that resolution was inserted.
I did see that, though. Do I have a motion to approve item five?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Haddock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item eight.
Mr. Chair, I just want to thank Kathy Johnson for her time serving on the Planning Commission. That's a pretty tedious job. There's a lot of work to it. Kathy's got other job opportunities coming up that is going to require a lot of time, but I just want to acknowledge her time on the commission and thank her for taking the time to work on that planning commission.
I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second. Number eight from Commissioner Ross Connect and a second by Commissioner Haddock. And I would agree. Kathy's done a very good job on our planning commission and spent the dedicated hours that it takes to serve in that capacity, so appreciate that. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now on regular agenda items. Item number 11, Rapid City Pier and Eastern Railroad. I believe we have Dean Krogman on Zoom. Good morning, Dean. How are you doing?
Good morning. I'm good, thank you.
You bet. So Dean, tell us what you would like us to know about this.
All right, let me give you a quick history of RCPNE. I started working for the DMNE railroad in the early 90s, and the DMNE railroad was then sold to Canadian Pacific. And Canadian Pacific then later sold to Genesee in Wyoming. And when they sold, they kept probably about 60% of the rail. And Genesee in Wyoming purchased approximately 790 miles of rail that goes from Colony, Wyoming to Tracy, Minnesota, down to Shadrin, Nebraska. Our request is going to pertain to the rail between Fort Pier and Rapid City. The RCPNE is a wholly owned subsidiary of Genesee in Wyoming. Genesee in Wyoming owns approximately, there's different numbers out there. If you looked online, it's 113 short lines. They actually are up around at 130. Each one of those railroads, railroad companies are supposed to be self-sufficient and not raid one from the other. And the RCPNE is the largest of those short lines. The home office is in Rapid City. The employment base is about 200 people overall. Forty of them are located in Rapid City. The intent of what we're doing is based on the governor's. The money that we're talking about is an $84 million project, unprecedented. DOT says it's the biggest one they have ever participated in. They are in full support. The legislature, 84 million, 42 million will come from the company. And I said each one is supposed to be self-sufficient, but the opportunity that this provides for shippers, consumers, for the producers is unprecedented, and they recognize it. The essence of the 84 million project is 42 million coming from the company, 20 million from the state of South Dakota, and 22 million from a RACE grant from the federal government. And that is the support we're asking for. And we have done this in the past, but on a smaller scale. Railroading is impossible without the federal government, and we have had different, 2014 we put in what they called at that time a Tiger Grant. The name has changed to RACE Grant at this time. But normally, the state actually participates, the federal government participates, and private company all participate in achieving these grants. Now, where does the state, the money come from? They are usually smaller grants, and the state gets 5 million from the federal government because we do not have any passenger trains, and that's supposed to make us feel better because of the amount of money they put into Amtrak and so on. So that's the money they use to match with other federal money and private money, and then other money as well in terms of leases and so on. At this time, in the last year, the state decided that it's probably better off not having owned the railroad, so they have been selling off rail that state has owned. And the impetus to that was the floods we had and so on, and the bridges we lost on the eastern side of the state and so on. So we are asking you to support the RACE application that the Department of Transportation will put in. We're not asking any commitment other than the support by letter of the county commission. What this will do is, right now, you know, the producers, the shippers are hindered by the rail that we have from Fort Pier to Rapid City. It's on shale. It's a 100-year rail that exists there. I don't know if you have pictures of it or not, but it's 10-mile. In fact, it's so slow that we have to change conductor, we have to change, not conductors, we don't have those, but we have to change the engineering and so on at Midland because we can't get across from Rapid City to Fort Pier without infringing on the requirements of the time that engineers can be on the train. Now, the other hindrance we have is the size of the rail cars. On that rail, which extends in then to the other rail, Pier to Tracy is all 25 to 45 mile an hour rail. It's all been improved. This is the last step in terms of the rail from Rapid City to Tracy. And the other hindrance we have is that we only can use rail cars that can handle 263 pounds. The industry has moved up to 286 pounds, 86,000 pounds, and that is what this will accomplish. We'll change the speed. This will be rail that is continuous rail, which will help us in terms of safety, speed, and so on. But we would be able to increase to 25 miles an hour, and the combination of being able to move two and a half times faster across the state and be able to increase the capacity, subject to the availability of product, that has to be an economic development issue that will pay off for the state. Now, the governor's, where does this 20 million come from? It's not any tax dollars involved. That actually comes out of the money that the federal government has sent to South Dakota. The emphasis that the governor has placed on this money is that she would like it to go to, you know, the improvement of issues that will last in the future, structural development of infrastructure, and then also to benefit economic development. And without a doubt, you know, this formula fits the rail. And the way this came about was, we were looking at a smaller, going from Fort Pier to Midland. There are no customers in that 32 mile an hour, 32 mile stretch, but at the same time, you have to improve that to improve the whole line. So we met with the governor about it, and then she actually was the one who asked, well, presented to us this proposal. And so we're here today asking for support from the counties. We've done this before. It is important that state and local governments support, understand what this project is in terms of increase of economic development and infrastructural improvement. So we're looking for your support. We have congressional support, and hopefully we'll get the grant submitted through the Department of Transportation. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Krogman?
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddock.
Sir, so the 20 million is coming from the Amtrak money, or is it coming from something else? Because we get money, like you said, every year for that?
Yeah, the Amtrak money is $5 million that goes into the Department of Transportation and Rail Board Authority.
Okay.
That's every, this 20 million is part of the program that the federal government has set up, and we're in for a second go around the first one. I don't know how many, over 160 million came in, and of course, they had to figure out how to spend it at the legislative level. So that's where that money comes from.
So the Department of Transportation, most projects, don't they pay 80, 20? If you put in for them?
The federal.
Operations?
No, not that I'm aware of at all. In the 35 years I've been out there, I've not heard that as it pertains to rail.
Okay.
Now, it's very possible that it pertains to highways.
Okay, it must, well, we did trolleys with it for the downtown, and it's for bus services and transportation, if I'm right. I don't know if, like you said, railroad is part of that transportation area, but the federal government in the past, they always paid that 80, 20. 80 is operational, 20 is capital costs, sir. So I didn't know if that was something that you guys had looked into, or is it even possible for rail?
You know, but the key that you just said is a 20% for capital. This is strictly a capital investment.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
I'm going to answer this without knowing. I just have to assume because, you know, railroading wouldn't happen without the federal government. I can't believe they hadn't looked into every possible scenario.
Just in case, something to look into, sir.
Right, thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Ross Connect.
Just a statement, Jerry, my roommate used to be an engineer for DMNE, and I don't know how many times there's derailments between Rapid City and Wall, so I can feel your pain relative to the condition of that rail.
Yeah, it, you know, early on in the DMNE times, we had, even until it got fixed on the eastern side of the state, we had derailments on the east as much as we did out west.
Yeah, number eight. Go ahead, Dean.
Well, I would say, when in 2014, when RCPNE took over, since then, they have invested close to 68 million in improving the rail, but they've only been able to do it in short sections, 10 to 15 miles an hour and so on. And they accomplished that to get the east side of Pier, Fort Pier, taken care of. And if they were to do this, it would be incremental. That's why this is so important in a turnaround time to get the, to the benefit of consumers, shippers, and producers.
I've had the opportunity to ride DMNE in the past, both at the 10 mile an hour, at which point you can almost watch the grass grow as you're moving. And I've also had the opportunity to ride it east of here at the 25 mile per hour, which really makes a huge difference relative to moving products. So appreciate you doing this, Dean. Anything further that you want to say?
I would just say that Jerry Vess sends his regards, and actually, he's the one who usually does this, but he is chairing a DOT meeting in Washington, D.C. at this very same. So he regrets not being here and wishes you all well.
Thank you, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I've got a motion to approve the Pennington County Board of Commissioners sign the statement of support for the RACE grant application being made by the South Dakota Department of Transportation to complete the upgrade of the Rapid City Pier and Eastern Railroad main line between Fort Pier and Rapid City, South Dakota. I've got a motion by Commissioner Ross Connect, a second by Commissioner LaCroy. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd just like to thank our governor for the vision of moving forward with the whole project instead of just doing a small section. I think that makes more sense at the time that we're in. And I agree with Mr. Drews, you know, I've got a couple relatives that are in the railroad, and as he said, 10 miles, having to stop and change engineers and so forth, it creates a problem, but also the speed of the product getting to the locations is good for our economy and good for our community. So just wanted to thank the governor and all involved.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Dean. Appreciate you being on the line. Dean?
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Yep. Item number 12, Greater Northwest Passenger Rail Working Group Congressional Language Support. Mr. Dan Bilka.
I approve, I move to approve chair's signature on a letter of support for proposed Federal Railroad Administration Working Group's effort to further the economic and social well-being of rural America by working to connect the national long-distance passenger rail system.
Is there a second?
Second.
I got a motion by Commissioner Haddock, a second by Commissioner LaCroy to approve our signature on this letter of support. Further discussion? Dan, is there anything you'd like to add to this?
With that, I provided the information from earlier, so thank you, Commissioner. We'll take any questions if you have them. Otherwise, can go through the presentation and kind of elaborate a little bit. There's been a lot of fast-moving pieces this last week, so there's been even more developments than what is currently listed on there.
Okay. Questions of Mr. Bilka? Dan, why don't you go ahead?
Let me see if I can, will I be able to share screen? I'll just be able to breeze through it a little bit. Or would that be possible? It says I'm not able to share screen right now, or is someone able to hold up my presentation that I submitted last Wednesday?
Gary, we have his presentation if he wants to just go through it.
Dan, we do, as Commissioners have your presentation. Joan is going to work on it here.
Okay, I think I got it here.
Okay.
Got it.
But just sort of brief overview, like with that, I appreciate the support on it and kind of with the developments in our greater region, and with the momentum building right now on the federal level to actually do something of infrastructure, that we want to take this kind of greater regional approach and what this can mean for our greater region. And that, I guess, sort of the 10,000-foot level, very broad levels, the idea of supporting this does not necessarily lock one into blind support on anything, just saying that this has, this is an interesting idea, this has merits, and that we would be interested in knowing what the findings are. And if I can just sort of go down the size of economic stuff, what it really means for our region with it, especially for Pennington County Rapid City area, the, what we have of the national network right now has largely been the result of what I call legacy lag, so that here in 1962 and 1967, the routes, the passenger routes that were left were the results of what the holster railroads, the railroads prior to the creation of the Amtrak had left at that time, and that they didn't necessarily sync up with one another. And of course, at the passenger service to Rapid City had been pulled off, I believe, the Milwaukee Road in '56 and the Chicago Northwestern in 1960. And that this is ultimately kind of resulted in the map that we have today, which is very skeletal, if at all. And that's why, like, our partners in the greater northwest, that we've been sort of having these dialogues, how can we work beyond our minute state-level focus and get a greater regional voice and regional effort for it? And that this, you may have seen this Amtrak Nexus map, and that one clarification I'll make on it is, we are told that this, the Amtrak Nexus map, or doesn't really connect us map, in my opinion, is not synonymous with what is being proposed by the White House or indeed what will be proposed or passed by Congress. So this is their take on it, as we say that it rhymes, but it's not a one-to-one. And I don't know if you've noticed, but people actually live here, and it's kind of with this lack of vision map is why that we in the greater northwest are wanting to form this working group, or modeled on the southern working group, to really look through the iterative process on what it means. Not this is what us, one iteration, one proposed ideal, a concept that they can be able to go through. And that sort of upcoming events, like I said, that we've had a lot of engagement this last week, I've just had a whole flurry of emails this morning, and that engagement with communities in Wyoming and from state organizations as well, and state-level leaders. And that, like I said, this language has been proposed and put to our congressional delegation as of last month, and that they're interested in it and want to be able to hear from the communities and counties on what your thoughts are on the matter.
Any questions of?
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddock.
So you guys are thinking about Amtrak? Is that what you're thinking about, Dan?
What we're thinking about is modern intercity passenger rail service, which does not necessarily have to be Amtrak, but that there are other providers as well. Actually, BNSF and UP actually do operate some passenger rail services elsewhere, for example, with the Chicago area with a couple metro services, so that there are other options out there. It's one of the, one of the base primary opportunities that we have, in that they are federally given statutory right to be able to access these different lines and work with the holster railroads, whoever they might be. But it does not necessarily have to be them themselves, but they are, as listed, would be a critical partner for this working group.
So when we're talking about the Amtrak and the money that we get from the Amtrak, I remember working with downtown when we were doing bus services and different things on the 80, 20 split. But I also asked, and it was Rich Sagan back in the day, why don't we get an Amtrak to Rapid City or close to, even in South Dakota? How amazing would that be, other people visiting? We are a tourism state. What would that mean for South Dakota? Been saying that for the last 10 years, and if this is possible, this would be amazing. So anything to do with this, I think we should support, or anybody in the surrounding western South Dakota should support, because, like I said, can you imagine how many people we'd and economic boost that would do for, actually, all of western South Dakota? So I'm all in favor of this and have been for many years, Dan, so I hope this goes forward. Thank you, Commissioner.
Further questions, comments?
Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'll just second what Ms. Haddock said. I mean, I've had the opportunity to use the Amtrak and some of the rail systems, you know, from Boston to New York and in San Diego, and I found them
Very fun.
Highly enjoyable. I mean, the scenery rides and the ease of the use and the comfortable instead of flying or driving, much better. And so I think, I know from my point of view, my wife's, that if there was one closer, we'd probably take a multi-trip on the, on the Amtrak, as probably many others have.
And it goes faster than 10 miles an hour, Gary.
Yeah.
I've taken a bunch too, Lloyd, and they're amazing.
Further comments, questions? Not, all those in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Haddock, a second by Commissioner LaCroy, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Looked good.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item is 13. You don't look like Cindy.
Nope, Cindy's out this week, so we talk to me. Hi, my name is Mary. I'm at the auditor's office. I have a couple of things. The first is, we have 38 businesses that have submitted renewals for their malt beverage license in South Dakota farm wines, starting July 1st, 2021, to go till June 30th, 2022. I just need a motion to approve the renewals of the retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license and release license upon payment of appropriate property taxes, please.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Haddock. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Ross Connect to approve the renewals. Any comments?
Mr. Chair.
Any public comments in regard to this?
I'd be abstaining from any of the MGL corner pantries.
Okay, Commissioner LaCroy is abstaining. And any question, any comments by the commission itself? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried with Commissioner LaCroy abstaining. Item B. Mary.
Great. The second one, I have two businesses. One business, Black Hills Helicopters, is requesting for a new retail on-off sale wine and cider license. The second business, Horse Thief Campground, is requesting for a retail, a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license. I just need a motion to approve the new license of the retail on-off sale wine and cider license for Black Hills Helicopters, and a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine for Horse Thief Campground.
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Ross Connect. Is there a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Haddock. Any discussion? Any public comments? Any comments from the commission? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C.
Okay. And then I have two organizations that are requesting a special license for malt beverage and... malt beverage. Their first one is the Rushmore German Club. They are requesting a special license for an on-sale malt beverage license for this Saturday. I just need a motion to approve the special retail on, on, on-sale malt beverage retailer's license for the Rushmore German Club.
Is there a motion?
So move.
I've got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy. Is there a second? And a second by Commissioner Lester to approve the special retail on-sale malt beverage retailer's license for the Rushmore German Club. Any public comments? Any comments from the commission? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. And then the second special license is from YPO Twin Cities. They are requesting a special on-sale license for a event that they are doing in June. I just need a motion to approve the special on-sale license for YPO Twin Cities, Twin Cities, please.
So move.
Second. I've got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, a second by Commissioner Lester. Any public comments in regard to this? Any comments by the commission? Commissioner Hancock.
Can somebody explain YPO Twin Cities? What do they do? Have they heard of them before?
YPO stands for Young Presidential Organization. It's, I haven't done a little research myself. It's a, it sounds like it's an organization for CEOs and higher-ups within corporations to get together and to present, or to kind of better the communities. This chapter happens to be based out of Minneapolis, and they're doing a retreat here in June for their organization.
Nice. Thank you, Mary, and thanks for doing the research.
Yes.
Any further questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thanks, Mary. Sheriff Tom. Item 14.
Good morning. Kevin Tom, Pandy County Sheriff. Also with me is Stephanie McCoy from our office to help answer the questions. And we actually have three different things for you today, but one's an exact session, two of them here. One, John from HR will be presenting, and then this one, we're presenting. And we've met with John from HR again on all of these, and John asked that we bring this forward in this fashion, rather than trying to adjust the position on the scale. And really, what it boils down to is just trying to be able to recruit and retain employees. The market's gotten very competitive, and I know Hiwa was in front of you, I think, last meeting, the meeting before, asking for a similar request. And we've included some data with that, and I think you have those as part of your packet, just looking at the number of applicants, which has decreased. What we have seen, though, is some different geographical diversity in applicants that are coming from other parts of the country that have discovered South Dakota, if you will. There's a lot of different bullet points on there as to, you know, starting salaries. And this pertains to deputies, correctional officers, LPNs, and RNs in terms of the requested motion in front of you. And then also, you'll see on the pages that follow, the retention efforts, and a lot of those have been done with, you know, support of the commission when it comes to our budget and salaries and whatnot. And then our recruiting efforts is also detailed in a couple pages there, showing what we do to try and recruit, recruit applicants. And the, and then Commissioner Hancock, they asked me questions. I provided you one more handout this morning, I laid in front of you, in terms of showing our starting salary compared to other agencies around the state, and you can see where we've clearly slipped in terms of starting salaries. So bottom-liners have trouble filling positions, and this discretion gives us the ability, particularly people with experience, to onboard them. So with that, we'll stand for any questions you may have, so.
Questions of Sheriff Tom or Stephanie?
Amy.
Commissioner Hancock.
So Stephanie or Sheriff Tom, you would start him at 24, 80, up to 27? You're increasing each side of it? Or this is what you increased it to, Ms. Stephanie?
So we are requesting to recruit, increase the backend. So the entry level, someone that doesn't have any experience, that wants to work for our agency, that's staying where it is. We're not increasing the actual scale.
Which is what?
22, 80, for a deputy sheriff or a correctional officer.
Okay.
We try very hard to maintain the integrity of the scale, so if someone truly has no experience, we do try to stick to that, because it impacts everybody that currently works here when you start to veer outside of that. But what we'd be asking is, currently, we can hire up to 25, 17 an hour for someone that has experience, and that could be 10 years, that could be 20 years, that's our cap. And we're asking, it's approximately $27 an hour that we're trying to get up to.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. I just didn't know if you're increasing both ends to hire it up to 24 and then 27. Thank you for that information.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd make the motion to authorize the sheriff's office additional discretion to place new employees up to a step nine on the pay scale for the deputy sheriff, one correctional officer, one licensed practical nurse, and registered nurse positions to remain competitive with our current market.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, a second by Commissioner Hancock for the discussion.
Follow-up?
Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, the work market out there is getting tough, and I really appreciate you guys' efforts to try and keep and retain the employees that we have. I mean, we've got, we've got restaurants out there that are, that can't stay open, they're shutting down hours and so forth. And even the company I work for have gone from 24 hours down to shutting down the night shifts for these stores. I'm seeing it all over the place. So I think, I think we're going to be going through quite a bit of this stuff in the near future, and hopefully it'll stabilize out in the next coming months and years, I hope. So, any input you guys have on, for sight on this, I'd greatly appreciate.
Further discussion? Questions? If not, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 15. Annette. Treasurer's Office request.
Good morning, commissioners. Sorry, Janet is not able to be here today. So we did present, I'm sorry, Annette Branch, Chief Deputy Treasurer. We did present a memo. There's, hopefully, it was all in your packet as well. I guess I just want to add that the leadership in the, in this office has always gone above and beyond to try to be as conservative with the taxpayers' money as we can. It's come to the point where the Pennington County across the state is being targeted in a good way. A lot of the different offices across the state aren't able to assist the out-of-state title work processes as we are. I understand that this is a, a hard, might be a hard sell to you. I'm hoping that it's not, in lieu of last year's request of three additional employees that we had. What happened was, we were able to remove the work from the front line, on the phones, to it, all the phones are being answered in the back office. We also split the front line up front, so that if we had faster transactions, they could be taken care of quicker by the front line. What's happened is with our glass windows up front, people will drive by to see how long the lines are, which they look shorter, because we've split that line, and we've got a fast line and a slower line, title transaction line. So they are eight hours a day, not, there's no way that they would have been able to answer those phones. So I thank you for that, and for your consideration for adding three additional employees. We have now increased quotes from closings on houses. We all know that the real estate market's going crazy right now. We get calls from realtors, we get calls from the closing companies to quote those prices. The dealerships are having record years, so we have tons of titles that are coming in from them, and in fact, support from the dealership saying, we can't believe you guys are keeping up with us. We can't keep continuing to keep up with them. We only have so many hours in a day. We want to utilize these three additional staff members to be able to possibly get a webcam, so that the calls that are coming in, just asking us, how long is your line? When's the best time to come? That they can just click on our website and look and see, see how long the lines are, in hopes that there not going to be a call coming in with that. In addition to that, let's see, we're going to look into adding on the website a tutorial for assisting people that are transferring their titles from out-of-state on how to fill out the forms for South Dakota and send them in, which will also assist and hopefully reduce some of the calls that come in. We can't do it with the staff that we have right now. I'm not saying that these three positions are going to need to be, who knows, in the future. If people do start doing all of the research themselves online and utilize that, again, as a conservative leadership in that office, we would reduce that in, through attrition then as well if needed. So with that, if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them.
Questions of Annette? Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hancock first.
Oh, okay.
Couple of things. I guess I didn't get the total amounts. So you have DBM. I see increase of 90,000, 292 from 21 is approximate, but with capital costs, administrative position at A13, and two tax title, and a B22, I guess I'd like to know the total amount that we would be approving at this time. And then that's just for six months, if I'm correct. So.
Correct. So the exact amount is, if we calculated it, laid it out for six months, the reason that it says estimate is because we don't know when we're going to be able to fill them. We're gonna, we're gonna try to fill them as soon as we can. So we calculated it for the six months, and it is 90,000, 292. We don't know if the people that we hire are going to continue to, you know, that they're gonna like the position, so that's why it says estimate. But that is calculated for the 90,000, 292. We have one computer that we need to purchase to utilize that, and that we would need to, is already in the budget to do that for 2021, so.
So the total increase would be 180,600 a year, or that's taking away the capital cost?
A year, yeah, that would be correct. Yep. This amount is for the 2021 budget.
For me, it's, it's easier to do this at budgeting times than just do it immediately. I know you guys work hard, and you always have worked hard. And then in the next month or two, we are looking, at least the next month, we are looking into our budget. But to create and put this in there ahead of time, for me, is, is a little hard, just kind of seeing what all the needs are. Plus, I know we're getting COVID money, guys, but I'd like to see, without the COVID money anymore, and the increase of employees and the things that we are increasing this year, is that going to affect our bottom line for the next few years? So some of this, it's, it's nice to have that extra money to use for capital costs or infrastructure or different things, but what's going to happen when you don't have that extra cost? What is that going to cost your taxpayers in the future in order to maintain? Again, I'm not against what you're doing. I know you guys work very hard, but I'd like to see the overall budget and FTEs that we are increasing this year and base it on priority. Not that you aren't that pri, number one priority, Annette, but that's kind of my position, not that I'm against what you're doing, Ms. Annette.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And to that, I would answer, we have the South Dakota car system that's coming down the pike.
Yeah.
Not at budget time. We're having it now. And so we need to train on that. And if any of you recall what happened in 2018, for that, we, Pennington County was the leader in that, as far as train staff and being able to support and get the transactions out quickly. The state is not even presented that yet for us to train on yet. They, all of it's not up and going. That means that we're going to have a short amount of time to do that. And they're hoping to go live in November, and we don't have the staff to be able to pull off to train on that, train on that. So budgeting information, if, if, I mean, it's the revenues that are going to hurt, because we're not going to be able to, and we're not going to be able to complete those transactions for the dollar amounts either. So revenues are up. I think that they're warranted. I know that the, the revenues that are under the treasurer's office, don't forget also the wheel taxes in there now as well, that we collect. We, I mean, we, that's not a portion of our budget, although we're the ones that collect that, as well as all the delinquent taxes too. So we definitely have seen an increase in that, and ahead of the game for 2021 for that as well.
But we're also
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Whoops, follow-up still.
Sorry.
So we also are having problems hiring people on a timely manner as well. So some of that, your, your program isn't up yet, and just a timely manner of hiring people might put you to that point in two weeks anyway. You know what I'm saying, Annette? So I don't think at that time, two weeks is going to put you back, in a sense, because if they don't have the training, they don't have, you know, through the state yet and hiring process. I think, I think we're going to have a little bit of some issues in hiring on your timely manner as well, Ms. Annette.
The system, I'm sorry, I, so I misspoke. The system for South Dakota cars is up. They don't have all of the programs in there, but the, the basic ones for renewing and title transfers are in there right now, and they're waiting for Pennington County to start training on it. So that is right now, and I, I just think two weeks is a big deal, because we would be advertising for two weeks. So a two-week delay on this part would actually be a four-week delay for us, and then now we're into really July before we start somebody, so.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
I just reflect, when I went in the Janet's office in 2020, when we had some, some major backups, so, I mean, of all the offices and the, that are feeling the volume right now of increased activity, I think the treasurer's office is definitely one of them.
Other, other questions of Annette?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Annette, I, first of all, I want to thank your guys' department for all the hard work that you guys have done. I mean, it's been a struggle for the last year or two, and you guys have worked through, I mean, the double lines, the phone center, all you guys have been working good to get the efficiency of things blowing and being safe. And with that being said, I'm, I'm just going to go back to the prior presentation to sheriff that we had. When we talked about our employees and the high-stress levels, that's one of the stress levels up there. I believe by adding these three employees, that we're going to be able to relax some of that stress, be able to give those employees the time off that they need when they need it. And that's very important in these, in these positions. And I think Pennington County as a whole, we're going to have to get creative and do that type of stuff in order to keep our employees and retain them. So I'm in support of a, I won't make a motion right now, because I spoke, but I mean, I just wanted to take the point in time that the efficiencies, the steps you guys take have improved, and, and I thank you for the foresight of looking in the future.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments?
Chairman.
Commissioner Hancock.
I'm not, I'm not against what we're doing. I'm just saying, we have buildings and grounds, they've increased. They have all kinds of issues that they need to move forward on, and they might need five FTEs because of what's happened in, in the buildings we have increased. So if we're saying a stress level and different things that we have, and then we have highway that's increased because of some of their bridges, roads, and some of their stuff, I just want to see all departments and make sure we're making a priority list, and not that you aren't that priority, Ms. Annette, but we have many priorities here that we need to increase. We also, again, need to think about that next set of budget the next year after we do these increases. Again, I, I do care about the employees, and I do care about Janet's department. I just want to make sure we're covering everybody in, in a manner that we are prioritizing based on what we have increased in the last year in many areas. So that's, that's my position, not that I'm against this department.
So as I look at this, you know, we're talking about the department that collects the revenue for the county, all of the revenue for the county, and they have seen a big change in their department. And as I look at this information that's provided, they handled 400, over 457,000 transactions in 2020. in twenty twenty. This is, uh, and we did increase their staff, so they're now up to twenty-three, but at the beginning of the year ago, I think that you were at twenty or nineteen, somewhere near. Then also, uh, the, the volume of, uh, vehicle title work, it went from, it from two thousand nineteen, it was five hundred and forty-four of those in March. In March of twenty twenty, that jumped to six oh four, and in March of twenty twenty-one, that's nearly doubled again. It's up over twelve hundred. And, um, I see where you say that you're currently six days out in processing the mail received in the office. Uh, I don't think that that's out of line. Uh, in comparison, I know that other, there's a lot of other counties that are, are dealing with many more days behind as, as far as that is concerned. So I think that, uh, you know, this is justified in my mind to add the three employees, uh, to bring that up. So I, I appreciate the, all the, the changes that the treasurer's office has made during the course of the last year to try to adjust to, to what we're doing. I have had, uh, some very positive comments on the way that you've changed the lines, that you've moved the title transfers into a line of itself or allowed those people to, to deal with separate people. And I think it apparently has cut the, the line time down for many of those people, so that's very much appreciated. So I am in support of this recommendation.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd make the motion to add three, uh, I move to add three new positions to treasurer's office effective immediately as follows. Two tax and title assistance, DBM B twenty-two and one administrative assistant, one DBM A thirteen, with the acknowledgement that the budget supplement may be necessary at the end of twenty twenty-one.
Got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ross Connect for the discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Just a little follow-up. You know, I appreciate all the discussion on this, but I think we're in the times that, that we gotta take actions faster, faster than later. Um, the market out there is getting to be that way. As you said, you could advertise and we may not get the applicants we want. It may be another month, too much down the road. Uh, that's my only comment is that I'm in support of this because we, I think we're gonna have to start doing some of these work coming forward. So, um, just to get proactive. Thanks.
Further comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
You also see that, you also see the increase in activity. I was, uh, looking in my packet at the registered deeds, uh, the number of transfers that they're doing. It's just, I think it's just a, I don't know if it's a pandemic or not, but something has created a lot of activity and I think we need to provide the service to the general public.
That's my point. Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Haddock.
One more question. Is your department full? Are you lacking any FTEs at this time?
We have, we have one FTE that we are waiting to apply. We needed to advertise. We're gonna do it with this one as well to get started on the-
So you're one short right now, too?
Yes, we had one that, um, left in February, was there for two, two months, I think. Yeah, thank you. So.
Further comments, questions?
Hence why the estimate again, 'cause it's not for everyone. It's like sucking out of fi- of a fire hose, quite honestly.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Uh, motion carried four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annette. Item sixteen, Mike Cool, Buildings and Grounds.
Good morning. Uh, Mike Cool, Director of Buildings and Grounds. Uh, last year, uh, Pennington County acquired the Lamp Lighter Inn property on the east side of our campus. Uh, given the implement, implementation of new, uh, parking regulations by the city of Rapid City, uh, with time limits, adjacent construction projects that are ongoing around our campus and, uh, recent, uh, design authorization, the crisis stabilization facility, uh, the building committee feels that this is, the best use of this property would be demolition of the building and construction of a parking lot. Uh, I'm here seeking authorization to move forward with a, uh, design contract with Renner Associates for fourteen thousand, uh, and fifty-seven dollars.
Well moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Haddock. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lassiter, uh, to, uh, approve the design contract for the Lamp Lighter Inn property demo and parking lot project with Renner Associates LLC in the amount of fourteen thousand, fifty-seven dollars. And further move to authorize Buildings and Grounds Director Mike Cool to have project design and administrative decision-making authority to include signing documents related to land use or similar project matters and to have expenditure authority up to fifty thousand dollars as Pennington County's representative. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Just a little latitude. I, I've been thinking about this with the parking lot and so forth and, and since we got you two on here with the building committee, the parking lot over here towards the east, uh, with the way things are, the explosion of the way things are going, and we're talking with PDL, may need to re, get a satellite place, is that parking lot, would that be something to discuss at the building committee about feasible of expansion that way for?
Acquiring the additional parking lot?
Our, our existing parking lot right out here to the east, would it be feasible to build a second level or even use that parking lot to continue the building east? Just a thought for the-
Continue this building?
Yeah.
Existing building?
Yep. Since we have the parking lot there and you're talking across the evidence, do it, just, just a thought.
Okay. Um, I, I, relative to, you're, you're talking about expanding the parking lot or expanding this building to the east.
Yeah.
Um, it would be very challenging to do because, uh, this site, uh, relative to where we don't have buildings, we generally have geothermal wells in the ground that are, provide energy for these buildings. Uh, it would be a challenge to build to do it.
Appreciate that.
Okay, further questions? Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion, uh, opposed? Uh, motion carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Dustin Willett, Emergency Management.
Good morning, chair members of the commission. Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. Uh, I will be brief this morning. I ran away from a, uh, online training session and then I'll run back. Uh, all thanks COVID, um, the numbers continue to, uh, trend in the right direction for us. So, uh, I think hundred and twenty-five, uh, active cases in Pennington County was the last data point that I saw, which is down, um, I don't know, fifteen or sixteen from the previous day. So our trend line is down. Pennington County's trend line is not going down as fast as South Dakota's overall trend line. South Dakota, um, uh, as a good thing, South Dakota's numbers are, are, uh, kind of falling off a cliff. They're going down dramatically, um, which is, is encouraging. Uh, Pennington County, Minnehaha County, uh, uh, you know, um, everything is anecdotal, probably just due to population density. Our numbers aren't dropping quite as, as fast as the rest of South Dakota. However, our positivity rate, that, uh, two-week, um, block that they look at, uh, were down to six percent. The last time I was up here talking to you, it was still up in that eight percent range. Uh, they wanna see it under five, so we're getting pretty close to dropping out of that moderate spread, uh, which is, which is again, another fantastic, uh, milestone in, in, um, uh, how COVID is moving through our community. So, um, vaccinations continue. Uh, obviously at this point, uh, the big challenge is, is overcoming vaccine hesitancy and those that are on the fence about whether or not they're gonna be vaccinated. Uh, the big news in vaccine, obviously, is that, uh, the emergency use authorization was extended to, um, children twelve to fifteen. Uh, those are available through Monument Health at their, uh, at their site at the mall. Uh, so that's something that can be scheduled, um, for children if, if parents are so inclined. Um, in terms of percentages, South Dakota is, is, I think, close to sixty percent vaccinated. Uh, Pennington County's not quite that high, uh, but again, those numbers are all encouraging. The CDC ensemble trend, uh, has our numbers dropping over the next, uh, several weeks. So, uh, right now, uh, everything that's out there is trending the direction that we would want it to trend, um, with the exception maybe of, of, uh, the pace of vaccination. It would still be fantastic if we could get a, a few more folks that are on, on the fence, uh, those that have some measure of, of vaccine hesitancy. Uh, it would, it would certainly be helpful, um, uh, overall, uh, to have a greater percentage of, of the population vaccinated. But, uh, outside of that, be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions of Dustin? Dustin, uh, relative to, to those that have chosen not to get vaccinated, are, are we seeing some of those now coming? Do you know, uh, for the vaccination, they maybe chose a couple of months ago to say, gonna wait or not gonna do it? Are you seeing more numbers of those coming forward or not?
I honestly don't know, Commissioner. I will, uh, I'll, I'll ask a few folks. It would probably be more in the know than, than myself on that. Um, I know that, that, uh, again, um, we have more vaccine right now than we have arms to put it in, uh, is, is the bottom line. And, and percentage-wise, uh, Pennington County is still below fifty percent, so there's still plenty of people out there with arms, uh, who, for whatever reason, um, uh, and it's certainly a choice and it's certainly a, a personal prerogative and a right, uh, regarding that decision. But less than fifty percent of our population has, has had the vaccine and we have, uh, more vaccines than we have willing arms right now. So, um, uh, wherever people are at and, and however people are processing, uh, that decision and, and making their decision, um, we'll just, uh, we'll see how that, we'll see how that plays out in Pennington County.
Did you say the lower age is twelve or ten?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay.
Yep. Uh, we, uh, it, it's anticipated, uh, that the, and, uh, this is conjecture at this point, or at least forecasting, I should say. Uh, but Pfizer expects, um, basically infant through twelve, uh, later this fall. I think September was the last date that I saw anybody put that, that anticipation on, but I think Pfizer is expecting, uh, emergency use authorization all the way down to infants by fall.
Okay. No further questions? Thank you, Dustin. Appreciate the information. Item nineteen, Equalization. Shannon Rittberger.
Morning, Commissioner. Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. I have a, a baitment request in front of you. This is really simple. This is an abatement, uh, for the twenty nineteen assessment on a mobile home. As, uh, the notes say, the, the owners are both dead and the sheriff's office has declared previous year is uncollectible. So there's no sense to still have this year on the tax roll.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ross Connect.
Move to approve the baitment application for tax year two thousand nineteen for parcel eight zero zero six seven six eight, Boblet nineteen fifty-four.
It's nineteen dollars and fifty-four cents. I got a motion by Commissioner Ross Connect, a second by Commissioner LaCroy. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion ca- or opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is for Jerome Harvey, and I don't see Jerome.
Coming right now.
Jerome is at the door.
There you go.
Jerome, you're up. So this would be for the second reading of ordinance seven twenty-six. The ordinance regulating open burning in Pennington County.
As, um, uh, Jerome Harvey, Pennington County Fire Administrator, I need Mr. Alderman to come on up. It's our second reading on this. Offices receive no input on this, uh, proposed changes and updating to the current ordinance.
Chairman.
Their motion. Commissioner Haddock.
Move to approve the second reading and final adoption of seven two-six, an ordinance regulating open burning in Pennington County.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Haddock, second by Commissioner Laster. Uh, any further questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerome. Item twenty-one, Highway Superintendent Joe Miller.
No, just kidding.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller. Why no? Uh, Pennington County Highway Department. Uh, up in front of you here is, uh, an agreement that we do generally every year, uh, with Forest Service for the, uh, in, uh, coherence with our livestock guard agreement. Uh, the Forest Service pays us to do maintenance on their cattle guards that are on our roads. Um, this, this agreement here specifically has, uh, a removal of two cattle guards on Palmer Creek Road. Uh, they were on last year's agreement, but, uh, we got word right after the agreement was signed that they wanted to leave those, but now they're back on there. So we're gonna try to get them removed before they pull them again. Uh, Slate Prairie is another removal. And then we've got, uh, cleaning on Mystic Road and also South Rockford Road. Uh, and then one on Mystic Road is going to get an asphalt apron to ease the maintenance of that. Uh, that asphalt apron just basically allows our motor grader to, to pick up sooner and doesn't dump, uh, gravel into that, uh, into those cattle guards. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions of Joe Miller?
Mr. Chair.
Is there a motion? Commissioner Ross Connect.
Move to approve an agreement twenty-one, R O one one oh two oh three zero zero dash zero four five with the Black Hills National Forest Service for livestock guard removal, cleaning and repairs.
Take it. Got a motion, uh, by Commissioner Ross Connect, second by Commissioner Laster. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Director John Morrell, Human Resources. Oh, looks like Sandy today.
Morning, Commissioners. Sandy Sortland, HR Generalist. John is conducting property inspections for insurance, so.
Very good.
We are seeking approval to adjust the assigned DBM rating for all sergeant positions within, within the sheriff's office. They were originally reviewed by Gallagher. Um, HR did not put any input into those reviews. Upon further consideration and discussions with the sheriff's office, we've determined that the sergeants are not being paid enough considering how many decisions and things that they have to make for their shifts. So we are seeking approval to adjust the DBM rating from a B thirty-two to a C forty-one for all the sheriff's office sergeant positions.
Well moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Haddock and a second by Commissioner LaCroy to change the DBM pay grade of, uh, sergeant positions from a B thirty-two to a C forty-one.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddock.
Uh, we were gonna lower the sheriff's pay, weren't we?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I missed, uh, missed the boat. I have to do the next one, Sheriff.
Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, or yes, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Sorry, missed you.
The next item is the elected official compensation study. We're asking for direction from the commission in December. You were, you directed us to secure a vendor to do a compensation study for the elected officials. The estimated cost received back was twenty-seven thousand five hundred to thirty-two thousand five hundred. Um, due to the recent elected official wage data for the auditor register of deeds, sheriff, state's attorney and treasurer, an increase is granted in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one via resolution. Um, Director Morrell is seeking guidance on moving forward or postponing the elected official compensation study to coincide with a broader employee compensation study to be completed in twenty twenty-four.
My, uh, my recommendation is gonna delay and combine this, uh, with, uh, later compensation studies. It just seems to me that twenty-seven thousand five hundred is, is too costly for this.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by myself, uh, second by Commissioner Haddock, uh, to delay and combine a compensation study of Pennington County elected official positions until the county engages in the compensation study for the entire county employee position list. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy. Item, uh, twenty-three. Uh, this is, deals with concerns with, uh, changes being made within the planning department relative to ordinances, policies and procedures. Uh, we've asked, uh, Janelle Fink from Fisk Land Surveying to come and, uh, express her opinion on some of these items. Janelle, welcome.
Welcome. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to allow me to address some of my concerns. Um, I appreciate it very much. I realize it takes time out of your busy schedule. And I would also like to start by, um, noting that this is not a criticism of staff. You have good people there. I enjoy working with them. So this is, this is nothing personal about them. This is, I, I guess a difference of opinion or issues about some policies and procedures that concern me as a consultant. So I want to talk about, a little bit about the two different ordinances that we work with in terms of, um, planning department. Primarily, it's our zoning ordinance, which is a land use ordinance. That tells us the things we can and can't do on our own property. It talks about minimum lot sizes, building setbacks, heights of restrictions. And the zoning ordinance primarily comes into play when building permits are issued. And it has to deal with internal development of your own lot. So inside the bounds of your own lot. External issues like road improvements outside of your lot are dealt with by the subdivision ordinance. So the subdivision ordinance is when we create a plat lots, and it deals with the infrastructure that goes along with that. Improvements of roads. It talks about things like right-of-way and surface widths, grade limits, ditch sections, turnaround requirements, dead-end road system, and water system requirements. So these are the infrastructure that a developer puts in place when we create these individual lots. And they become responsible for that. The developer is creating lots and selling them. They're the one that benefits from them. So it stands to reason that they would be the ones that are required to do these improvements, not an individual landowner that comes to get a building permit on an already platted or deeded lot. So each ordinance has a section that addresses variances or exceptions to these respective requirements. Now, the zoning ordinance deals with variances in Section 509, and it is extremely specific in how we deal with those variances. It specifies that you require publication in a newspaper. It requires two-thirds vote of the Board of Commissioners. You have to post a sign. You have to mail notices by certified mail. And currently, the fee for that action is $420. Then there's also very specific criteria for the zoning ordinance. You guys deal with these. It talks about specific circumstances, not allowing uses that are excluded in the district, creating unmarked hardships or unreasonable deprivation. You also have to be in harmony with the ordinance and not injurious or detrimental, and not contrary to public interest. The ordinance, it doesn't direct you to not consider economic hardship in this, but you're told, you know, when you look at this, you're told not to. But I don't see that appearing in the ordinance. Now, subdivision variances or exceptions or waivers are entirely different things. They're dealt with in Section 700 of the subdivision ordinance. And their procedures say that you provide a written statement describing the request that the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners consider it at a public meeting, and that conditions of approval may be attached. Now, the fee for this used to be $250. And very specifically, it mentions nothing about publication in a newspaper, a two-thirds majority vote, posting a sign, or mailing certified notices. Now, despite the vast differences between these two, within the last six months or so, us as applicants, or we as applicants, have been required to follow the zoning procedure when we ask for subdivision variances. So now we have to pay the $420, and we have to get the two-thirds vote of approval. We have to post the sign, mail the certified notices, all in the absence of that instruction within the subdivision ordinance. So the policy or procedure has totally changed, and it doesn't follow what the ordinance says today. So I find no basis in the ordinance to support the change in the policy. Now, if for some reason, we've been doing this wrong for 30 or 40 years, despite all of our planning director's expertise and all of our legal counsel, if we've been doing something wrong, we should certainly change it. But I contend you have to change the ordinance first so that those of us in the public and consultants understand what the rules are. You can't change them arbitrarily in the middle of the game. So that becomes my issue. I think we're not following ordinance. If the ordinance needs to be changed, let's do that and have due process. Where we have a hearing, don't just change your policy where you don't get a chance to comment on it. And I certainly don't unless I raise a ruckus and come see you, which we shouldn't have to do. So then, the second issue that I have dealing with variances is prior to this, we have always been able to apply for more than one variance for a particular applicant. Now, we always have to do separate zoning and subdivision ones. But in terms of zoning, we could do a lot size variance, and we could do a setback variance under the same application and the same fee. When we did subdivision variances, remember that were $250, it used to be. We could get an exception for a plat scale. We could get an exception to improve an undeveloped section line right-of-way or wave percolation tests on soil profiles on a 40-acre parcel. Now, we are being told we have to submit them separately, and pay separate application fees for each application. You're gonna see later on today in the agenda where I have two that are on the same property. And I contend that there is nothing in the ordinance either for subdivision or zoning that says that you can only deal with one at a time. And we seem to have managed here too far to do that okay without any issue or problem. When I asked staff why, or to show me where is this precluded in either ordinance or self code of law, nobody pointed it out to me, but they said that it was cumbersome to deal with more than one on an application. Now, not charging somebody an extra $600 to deal with a couple of applications seems like you're creating a hardship for the public, and you're wasting time and resources in publishing these items. You're wasting your time on the agenda by creating separate items for each of these. And I think we, personally, I believe that we can all deal with a little bit more paperwork and handle them all on the same application. So I find that there is no reason for that policy change outside of changing our ordinances. So that becomes an issue for me. And so it would be easy on an application for somebody to have to pay, say they needed three variances. That turns out to be $1,020 for one application fee versus $250 that it used to be six months ago, or whatever it was when the change took place. So those concern me greatly. Again, it's hard to counsel. It's hard for me to do my job. It's hard for the public to look at ordinances and understand what they're required to do because they're, because we're doing something different than what the ordinance says. The last item, I guess, that I want to deal with, or my primary concern at this time, has to do with a recent addition, excuse me, a recent addition to the zoning ordinance. Remember, we're talking, the zoning ordinance is land use. Recently, you added a Section 204F, which is essentially a duplication of the dead-end road system requirement. You added this into the zoning ordinance. Right now, today, the dead-end road system lives in the subdivision ordinance as part of our design standards. And it regulates when somebody comes in and does a subdivision that they are required, if they are over these 40 units and are over a mile, or it's two miles in length for an overall road, then you have to provide that secondary access. What happens when you put it in the zoning ordinance is now it becomes a land use issue. It's not a developer, I'm creating lots and I need to provide secondary access. It's I'm a landowner. I need a building permit, and I need to comply with the zoning ordinance. So when I initially talked with staff about this, their first response was, well, if you have an existing use or residence, then you might be exempt from this, and they wouldn't require it. That sounds kind of nice, but it's inherently unfair to the individual who owns a vacant lot, and they've planned on retiring, and they come out here, and now all of a sudden, if they're in the Schroeder Road area, or if they're in Thunderhead Falls, or if they're in Pine Cliff subdivision, or any one of numerous other subdivisions, and they want to get a building permit, that would trigger the requirement to comply with the dead-end road system for one person to address that. I think that in most instances, that creates a totally unachievable goal for most people. Unless you happen to own land that provides you access directly to a secondary road or something, you don't have the ability to do that. And so it's a hardship to do that, and it is inherently unfair to place that burden on number 41. And this sounds a little familiar. A couple of weeks ago, you guys dealt with something similar with the Rushmore Ranch Estates and the water system requirement for the poor folks that were the trigger, the one trigger, to add in this extra reservoir space and storage that probably could have been easily $100,000 to achieve. Now, you granted them a variance. They had to do their own sprinkler system, so they had to take care of what was on their own lot, but you didn't require them to make improvements for the entire subdivision. I believe that you need to take the dead-end road system out of the zoning ordinance because it should not be triggered for an individual with a building permit, whether it's a garage, or a new structure, or whatever, to place that burden for compliance for a whole subdivision on one individual. Now, that doesn't say that I don't have and share concerns about fire protection and safety. I do. I am, my folks were evacuated in the Westbury Trails fire. I spent the night hanging in a tree in 1972 in my pajamas. And so I have super concerns about things like fire safety and flood and things that are affected by this. But it is unreasonable and unfair to place this burden on one individual who's not developing or subdividing property. And I think that that really needs to be reconsidered. Now, I previously had some issues with the, back and forth with the zoning ordinance, but I think we're getting there. That was an extreme confusing, extremely confusing process. I think we're getting there, so there's probably no need to rehash that. But today, these are the primary things that I have issue with. I need my ordinance to say what we're supposed to do, and we need to follow those rules in order to understand that and actively advocate for our people, help our people, and develop property. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any, and I do very much appreciate your time. Thank you.
Questions of Janelle. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ross Kinnock.
Janelle, you've been in business, or Fisk has, what, 40 years?
Yeah.
And you're saying for 40 years, things went pretty smooth. And then somewhere, you mentioned totally changed. What would the timeframe be where you think something totally changed?
I think it's been within like the, essentially, the last year that we've had. The changes within the zoning ordinance that I talked about, you know, roughly within the last year. I can't pinpoint a specific date, but within the last six to 12 months.
So if I understand it right, then if we went back the way we were doing things 12 months ago, we'd be consistent with what we did 40 years prior to that.
You know, essentially, there have been, you know, a few updates and changes to our ordinance periodically, but yeah, we were sailing along pretty smoothly. I mean, I could do this in my sleep. I mean, I, you know, I understood my ordinance. I knew what to do. I can advise my people. We were successful with that. And I'm left not really knowing what's up and what's down, or why, or how to explain, you know, why we're doing something different than what the ordinance says.
Well, I admire you coming in front of the commission, and I really think that we need to take some action. I don't know what that action is, but I think we need to try to figure out what has gone wrong in the last 12 months.
Chairman.
Mr. Haddock.
Couple of things. The zoning ordinance and the land use for variances, I don't know if we can combine them on certain areas. I think we need to make it more clear or somehow have a better understanding of the variances and how we're putting them together. Because in subdivision ordinance regulations in 700, do we pay, Janelle, do you pay 420 per variance in that one? Or you just do it during the zoning?
No, we, both now, require the 420. And if you do multiple, you have to do the 300. They don't charge you for the notification or the sign. So the base fee is 400, and your secondary applications are each $300 beyond that. And that's both for subdivision and zoning. And before that, subdivision variances were only 250.
Okay, so and they did combine them back then?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
I'm seeing, we increased, I remember, because of the work that we had to do on some of this. But the other is that I didn't understand that we didn't do them in a combination, where we couldn't do them together if they were on the same property. So I'll just ask Brittany that later. And then on the zoning ordinance on land use for 40-unit rule, it was in subdivision before, or was?
It is, right now. It's part of the design standards in the subdivision ordinance.
Okay. And you don't like that, 40?
No. It's perfect where it is in the subdivision ordinance.
And not to put it in the zoning?
Not in the zoning, because then it becomes a land use and a building permit trigger rather than a subdivision and a developer trigger.
And I have to agree with you on that one. The other, I need to look into a little bit more on the process because, again, the last 12 months, we've made a lot of changes, but the last few years, we've made a lot of changes. We made a lot of really good changes. So there's some, these are a few hiccups in the changes, so I don't think we need to go back and change everything. There's just a few things we need to work with, the community, or some of the people that come in on some of the zoning and land use and subdivision regs. But other than that, I think the planning department has done a really, really good job at changes. So going back, I don't think is a good idea, but moving forward in a way that we could actually look at these few things, which makes sense to me, I think would be a good idea. So I don't know what we need to do moving forward, but at that point, I was willing to meet with the planning and call in, Janelle and some of the other applicants, just to kind of see bottom line. What can we change to make the process a little bit different? Because that's what we're talking about. We're talking about the process of people that come in, including Janelle, understand, and we're treating fairly in a sense, but we're also treating our staff for their time and their energy put into some of the things that they are doing. So that's kind of where we're going and where we are today. So if we can look at these again, and if there's stuff we just can't change, and we need to work with Janelle and the public to kind of work that out, I think is a positive. And other things, might have some really good reasoning that we're not getting on some of this. Because, Janelle, you've always been good about coming forward. You've always been fair and just. And going through these processes, I don't think have ever been always smooth. So I've been in the, from planning department person to, or planning commissioner to county commissioner. Some things just don't go smooth. So I think this is a hiccup that we can fix, that we can find solution with. And I think it's easier than we think in some of the areas to work with our planning department. Because, again, Brittany took over. We had to make a bunch of changes because a lot of stuff weren't being understood or not done correctly in some of those areas. So I believe they've done a great job. But again, I think, moving forward, Chair, I don't know if we do a committee, or we have a couple of people, a couple of commissioners look at this and see if there's anything different we can do moving forward. And working with both sides, I think, is a good idea.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lloyd LaCroy.
Janelle, first of all, you know, I was, I'm glad we're in this setting. You know, and the reason why I say that is because I think the majority wanted to have everybody hear this. And what you hear, all five here at the same time, emails get confusing, intentions get misread, all that type of stuff. So I'm glad you're here explaining your frustration, and we're all hearing what it is. And it's something like you've got some possible solutions. For me, what I'd like to see from you is what, some of your recommendations, like that 40-unit rule being switched out. If we could get that right, see some of that stuff. Other thing I'd like to know is, you know, you talked about, one of the hardest things is the conditional use is having to do two or three separate ones. You know, I'm not quite, you know, I think they're saying in the law, we have to do that, separate those out. But what's the possibility of, okay, we got three of them. Instead of charging $450 for three of them, for three of them, that same person's gonna work on, we're gonna charge six. You know what I'm saying? Something along those lines, coming up with some solutions along those lines. So it doesn't just keep adding up. Those are just some of my thoughts. But I really wanted to express that I'm glad the commission decided to put you on the agenda and have you come here and explain this. Because I was reading through the emails and even my own emails with other people, you know. Depending on what mood I'm in is how I read it. You know, so at least now, we see your genuine concern, and I appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Ross Kinnock. Commissioner Rosskinack.
I think we all know that we have to follow state statutes. But I think state statutes can be interpreted in many different ways. They're very subjective. They're not really defined. And I think this is where some of the problem is. We gotta follow state statute, and it's one person's interpretation that could dictate where we go in the future. And we need to sit down and figure out what is actually going to be best for the general public and still follow state statute.
I agree wholeheartedly. If we are doing something wrong, we need to change our ordinance instead of just changing policies, because that's where it creates confusion for the public. So if something isn't correct. I hope we can find ways with the variances to still continue to address multiple variances on the same application. If it takes a separate sheet for each one, because we have two, I'm up, I'm up for the challenge of filling out the paperwork for that and talking about it. I hope maybe that you are as well for, for looking at it and dealing with it, rather than it having to be a total separate application and a total separate fee for someone.
Janelle, appreciate you, uh, coming.
Thank you.
Presenting your information. Uh, I'd ask Brittany, Brittany, is there any of these you would like to address at this point in time?
Good morning. Brittany Muller, Planning Director. I just want to give a little bit of history on the variances and why, um, they are in front of the Board of Adjustment. Um, that was actually a request that was brought up by a previous commissioner, um, on the dais that, uh, he felt that we were addressing subdivision regulation variances incorrectly. So we actually, um, consulted with our legal counsel at that time. Um, she looked into it and actually got an attorney general opinion that we were doing, uh, subdivision regulation variances incorrectly. Um, so as far as doing it for forty years, unfortunately, we were doing it illegally in accordance with the AG opinion. So that is why we changed our procedure for doing that. If you do look at the state statute and you do look in, in our ordinance, you know, when you get into pluralities and singulars, it does say a variance. So when you look, when we look at variances, we look at them individually in accordance with our ordinance and statute. It addresses them singularly. Um, in addition to variances, um, the cost is three hundred dollars. For variances, that fee has not changed since two thousand and seven. Um, so over fourteen years ago, um, was the first time that, or the last time we ever changed the fee. Um, the legal advertising, that includes legal advertising for those, um, variances also. And as you all are, all are aware, that legal advertising has not gotten cheaper over the years. So the actual, um, request is, you know, we're actually losing money and on staff time. And it, it's a cost to our budget and to taxpayers, because we're actually at a deficit every time that we do a variance. So that's, uh, some of the things that, um, we looked at, uh, with the variances and as far as our justifications for. And yes, we are working on, and we have been doing ordinance amendments, you know, based on problems that we have seen, um, things that are not correct. Um, there is a caveat in our ordinances that does say that if we are in conflict with state statute, state statute trumps. And in this instance, with variances, um, that is the case. It wasn't a one-person opinion. It was actually an opinion of the Attorney General's office, and we do have that opinion. Um, so that is where that came from. Uh, we are working on amendments to that, um, section of the ordinance. And as far as the forty lot rule, um, that was something that, you know, if the lot is existing, um, they are legal non-conforming. Um, so anything prior to that enactment of that February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, um, they would be grandfathered, so that portion of the ordinance wouldn't apply. Um, in section four hundred of our ordinance, it does address legal non-conforming. It does address those kinds of situations, so those would come into play, um, when we do those individual review, and they would be on a case-by-case basis. The reason for that forty lot rule in the zoning ordinance, and it was put in the zoning ordinance, and there is, um, it is allowed to be in our zoning ordinance. Statute allows those things to be in our zoning ordinance. Um, you know, we can have to lessen congestion, to secure safety from fire panic and other dangers, to promote health and general welfare. So it does follow up, fall under our ability to put those types of things in our zoning ordinance. Uh, the reason we did that was to kind of level the playing field as far as when things are planted outside of our jurisdiction that we don't have control over. And the other thing is under eloquent description, which is actually a, a mechanism to transfer land, not necessarily develop land. Um, so in that mechanism, you could have someone that is right across the street from one another that would have different standards. One person that was plating would not be able to plant, but the person that was describing would be able to. Same area, same, but you're applying different standards. So that's how we, uh, approach that requirement in our zoning ordinance. So those are kind of some of the questions. So I'll entertain any other.
Mr. Chair.
So one of the, Janelle's concern was policy. Now, policy, that's internal in your department, right?
Correct, but those are not policy changes. That's actually requirements under statute that we made those changes, um, for the variances. So yes, that is something that we need to change in our zoning ordinance, and we have been pretty diligent in making as many changes as we can to the zoning ordinance and, and problem areas. Um, but that is something that, because statute and the AG opinion, I don't feel that we have the ability to forego that just because our ordinance is wrong. We do have a severability clause in our ordinance that says if it's, if it's, if we're in conflict, we have to abide by statute. Um, and in that instance, we are in conflict in our ordinance.
But I, I guess my question is, we talked about the statutes, they can, they can be interpreted different ways. We all agree on that.
And, and this was an interpretation from another attorney. There are current attorney and the Attorney General's office. So that's who rendered the opinion and where it came down from.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
So I guess what I'm listening to is there's a policy and then there's an ordinance. And if, if you're doing, um, helping people like Janelle is, and it's not, it's just a policy, then it's just written down and you're telling her at the time, this ordinance, which she has followed for how many years? So that, that would, I can understand why that's a little, it looks like a policy is something you just decided, um, today we're going to do this, and ordinance is set by state statute. Am I correct? Even though in policy, it is state stat- statute, but how is the general public supposed to know that? Is it written down somewhere, Ms. Brittany?
So policy and, and statute is different in our ordinance, and I think it's getting confused, because I think the way that we're doing our variance isn't a policy. It's actually our requirements under statute. Yes, it conflicts with our zoning ordinance at this time, which will be amended, but I don't think that we as an office, especially with an AG opinion, should or could have the ability to be in conflict with that.
But it confuses the general public, because it looks like we just, because it's not in the ordinance yet. Because we haven't made those cha-changes, even though it's the AG's opinion. Um, the other thing is, is, um, between zoning and subdivision on some of this, why couldn't we have left the forty unit rule in subdivision? You said because of what again?
So we had to, what we consider level the playing field. So if someone were to eloquently describe, or someone were to, um, plant outside of our jurisdiction, they may have different standards that they review on. So you're basically, you're creating two different situations under a same scenario of subdividing a piece of property. Because you could be on one side of the street, have to plant here on the other side of the street and describe, and you have different standards that are applying to you.
So there's land use and then there's subdivision ordinances. So this would be, you're saying that land use and forty unit rule just became a zoning issue?
And it can. And under statute, we can, uh, regulate density under land use. That is allowable.
Okay, and then the other is the multiple. Do we charge, um, for multiple variances? We used to put them like they needed the fourteen, uh, standard, road standard. They needed to change that. They needed to change percolation. They needed, and all the changes, and maybe not percolation is one of those. Um, now we have them separate. Did we used to change or charge one fee for all three changes? Or did we do them separately as well? Did, if Janelle came in for three different areas that she needed changed, and, and they were all in, um, one section or one piece, did you charge her still the two fifty each ordinance?
Yes, that's the way it was charged when we were doing it illegally under the old way. You know, as far as going to the planning commission and the board of commissioners.
For charging, sorry, Brit.
Yeah, instead of being in front of the Board of Adjustment.
So did you charge her, um, two fifty, two fifty, and two fifty for each, all three? Or did you charge her on the same thing that she was asking? Did you just charge two fifty with the three?
There was two fifty for as many subdivision regulation variances.
Okay, so when we made the changes and we made the fees different, we didn't that, take that in consideration. So when I'm working on something and I'm working on three different changes on a, on an area, it's a lot easier for me to do than it is, you know what I mean? Than me charging you for all three, because I'm already seeing the whole plot or the whole plat, and I should be able, and it makes it a lot easier. So to charge me for each one, I think would, is a little excessive. If I'm doing one and it's by itself, it's a little bit different to me. You, you see, because you're still working on the same plat. It might take you a little bit longer, but should it take you, um, a thousand dollars worth extra on a variance? That's what I'm asking.
Um, I believe so, because it went from not having to be, um, advertised in the legal newspaper. Um, the procedure for the review of a variance now is very different, as you are all aware, through the prongs and through the different criteria that we have to review, um, how we have to publish, you know, there's just different requirements.
So do you publish all three of those at the same property? Or do you publish just once, or you have to publish each one of them separately now?
We publish them and they charge us by line, so every time that you add more. So it's not like a hundred and forty-four dollars every time. So that's what that we charge for the advertising right now.
Okay.
Um, but it does take time and consideration, site visits. Right now, even just with one, just one, without considering any other things, we're at a deficit as far as, um, staff time, mileage, things like that. Yep, we're at about a hundred and twenty-dollar deficit just on one, just currently, just working on one, because we have not raised our fees in such a long time, that it's taking more staff time, it's costing more, just generally, just to do one than it does at all. So because we have not raised our fees and, and our, um, advertising fees have increased significantly over that timeline.
So Commission, if I could interrupt here. Um, I don't think we're going to resolve this issue during this session, but what I would suggest that we consider doing is establishing a working group before we conclude our meeting today. Uh, and have that, and I'd like to have a couple of commissioners involved in that working group, uh, to meet and come up with recommendations that can be brought back, uh, to the full commission. Mr. Chair.
Chairman, and if we could, uh, maybe, uh, include Janelle or, or Long Branch or one of, some of the public that actually work with us that we can find solutions with, where we can have a real conversation back and forth.
I would agree with that.
About, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with either side in this sense. I'm just kind of asking the questions. But I agree with you, sir. Um, I think we can have the working public with our planning, so they have a better understanding as well. So I agree with you, sir.
So I would just suggest that we table the issue until later in the meeting to, uh, actually come up with ideas as to that working group.
I'll second that motion.
I guess we got a motion. To table, uh, until later in the meeting. Uh, I might just ask, Janelle, would you be willing to serve on that? Janelle indicates that she would be. So, uh, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. I would, uh, recommend that we take a ten-minute recess.
Colin, have something to say first?
I just wanted to say, um, my understanding is the variances that went in front of the Board of Adjustment before, uh, the Attorney General's opinion came down, were each, uh, addressed separately and they had a separate application with a separate fee. And then I also wanted to say that, um, if there's something that we could change, for example, like the forty lot rule, that's something that the commission doesn't want in. That's something that we could address through the work group, like, uh, Mr. Chair has suggested, uh, to work with that. But there's some things that unfortunately we can't change, that we have to follow state law or the United States Supreme Court, if they come down with an opinion, or the South Dakota Supreme Court, when they come down with an opinion.
But it can be a discussion at the, at the working level of groups, so.
Yes, of course. And I just wanted to point out, uh, one other thing is, uh, the economic hardships. You're not going to find that in ordinance or statute. That's from a nineteen eighty-two South Dakota Supreme Court case. Uh, I brought it to all of your attention before, um, where the South Dakota Supreme Court said expressly, you cannot consider that in a variance. Um, so with that, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Rosskinack.
So when did the state's attorney's office, uh, find out that we were doing it wrong for forty years? I mean, did they come here and say, you're doing it wrong, or did we bring it to their attention?
My understanding is that, uh, Commissioner Farby raised, raised the issue, uh, up here on the dais during meetings, and that he requested Michelle look into it. Michelle looked into it, and the Attorney General rendered an opinion about a year and a half ago or something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion for a ten-minute recess?
Come on.
Thank you.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. I take a motion to go into Board of Adjustment. Got a motion by Commissioner Adcock.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lassiter. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Jason.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Thinnison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item A is variance twenty-one dash zero seven. To reduce the minimum required lot size from ten acres to five acres in an agriculture district. Applicants and landowners are Dalton and Jennifer Richter. Site location is near two twenty-fourth Street and Quinn Road. Lot size is five acres. Physical description is open prairie of Rolling Hills. Current zoning is agriculture district. That is also the land use. Surrounding zoning is also agriculture district. And this property is located in an area of unuttered flood hazard. Staff's recommendation is to deny this request, as there are no special conditions that exist to grant the variance request. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves of the request, staff does not recommend any conditions to be included. In basing our recommendation, staff utilizes a two-pronged approach. The first prong determines whether granting a variance runs counter to the public interest. Those are on the screen for you. I'll just read staff's responses, starting with number one. Staff found no. The neighborhood is zoned agriculture district and utilized for agricultural purposes. Granting the variance will not injure the neighborhood. Number two, yes. The neighborhood is zoned agriculture district and utilized for agricultural purposes. The subject property conforms to the established uses of the neighborhood. Number three is no. The, the minimum lot size in an agriculture district is ten acres. Number four is yes. The current comprehensive plan identifies the property as agriculture district. And lastly, number five, no. Allowing the uses by right associated with an agriculture district on the subject property will not harm the public, as all surrounding property is zoned agriculture district and utilized for those purposes. Prong two, uh, this determines whether special conditions exist to grant the variance. Staff found that there are none. The subject property is open prairie without any exceptional narrowness, topography, or sighting. There are no special conditions that would warrant granting this request. As the property sits today, uh, it is vacant and there are no utilities located on it. It was sent out for interdepartmental review. There were no injections or concerns received. Just a little analysis that staff conducted. On March twenty-fifth, the applicants did apply for this variance request. Four, and they were given the option to rezone the property. Four days later, they filed a quitclaim deed, uh, creating the five-acre parcel. And approval of this variance will bring the five-acre parcel into compliance with the county zoning ordinance.
Are the Richters in attendance? Are there representatives? Yes, come on up.
Morning.
Good morning. Give us your explanation of what you'd like to do.
I'm just trying to get a house put out here in the country, I guess, so.
There's no improvements on that property now?
No, sir.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
So how many acres do you own around there, your family?
Uh, my in-laws own basically all of section eight there.
And how many acres is that?
All but the stuff to the left there, I guess. I don't know how you.
Is it forty? Is it eighty? Do you know how many acres they own?
Section is six hundred and forty there.
Okay, and do they live on this land?
Correct, yep.
Okay, and they're giving, they quitclaimed it so you could live on the land?
Correct.
And help them with the land or, or?
Yep, just, they're getting up there in age, so we're going to get moved out closer to them, because I actually live in town, so.
Okay, that's usually on these kind of, um, issues, guys, is they have to do those five-acre lots in order the, in these limited, or these agriculture areas in order to add either a family member or someone that needs help in those areas. So, um, I appreciate that, answering those questions, sir.
Commissioner Lacroix. Commissioner La Croix.
I'm going to give you my findings. I agree with staff's first-pronged approach agreement. But I, I find, my finding is granting the variance doesn't, I move, I shouldn't move. I'm going to, this is my finding. Granting the variance does not run counter to the public interest. I believe the special condition, a condition does exist with the landlocked between section line to the north, the old road to the west and the hills to the southeast of the hills. And I believe the special condition also has unable to meet the setback requirements of all sides. And I believe that's what excuses the literal enforcement of the ordinance. I don't believe, I believe enforcement would cause unnecessary hardship to, that they wouldn't be able to use their property.
Thank you.
I've got a motion by Commissioner La Croix, second by Commissioner Adcock to approve the variance for the discussion. Just a reminder to anybody in the audience, we do ask for speaker request forms. You find them in the back. So if there's one of these that you would like to speak on, please fill one of those out. Turn it into Holly Hennies up here on your right and we'll look at it from there. So I have a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Item B. Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item B is variance VA twenty-one dash zero eight to reduce a setback on the northern property line from twenty-five feet to six feet. As the property currently sits today, there is a small cabin and an onsite wastewater treatment system on the property. The access to this property is via Rochford Road. There is no special flood hazard area on the property. However, there is a creek that traverses the southern portion of the property. This was routed around through interdepartmental review. No items of concern were noted. We do take a two-pronged approach to looking at these variances. And instead of putting the answers up on the screen, I'm going to utilize some maps so you can visualize under prong one, whether granting the variance runs counter to the public interest. Does it injure the neighborhood? No, the request does not appear to be a threat of a nuisance to the neighborhood. Does it conform to the neighborhood? Yes, garages are typical throughout this area and a permitted use with an approved building permit. Does it conform to the general purpose? No, the current zoning ordinance requires a twenty-five-foot setback. Does it harm the public safety, health, or general welfare? No, placement of the garage within the required setback does not appear to harm the public or community. Under prong two, whether a special condition exists to grant a variance? Staff believes, yes, the topography is sloping with an active creek consisting of five acres. Physical conditions warrant approval of this request. As you can see on the map, there's a septic tank and drain field to the north and the water line that goes through that property to the south there with the creek that runs through. There's the visual, you can see how it drops off there. If the special condition exists, does enforcing the ordinance create an unnecessary hardship? The buildable area on the property is limited due to topography, a creek, location of the water line, and placement of the onsite wastewater treatment system. And finally, if the special circumstance exists, does granting the variance observe the ordinance spirit? Yes, the unusual shape of the lot in conjunction with topographical limitations provides minimal buildable area. The current cabin has a modest, is a modest nine hundred and twenty square feet. They are looking to build this garage because of the weather and they need the storage area there. They did provide a narrative that is attached to the staff report. So staff is recommending approval with one condition, that this variance only applies to the twenty-eight by forty-two garage and that all other structures must maintain the proper setbacks or obtain separate variances.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
So I agree with staff findings. And I also recommend that this variance applies only to the twenty-eight by, that's one of the conditions. By forty-two garage, all other structures must maintain the proper setback or obtain separate variances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner La Croix. Any further discussion? Just pointing out, I don't have any speaker request forms. We haven't had any requests as far as Zoom or audio, as far as I know. Bring it back to the Commission. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item C, Cody.
Code SAC Environmental Planner. Item C is subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one dash zero six. It is to waive the submittal requirement not to submit percolation tests and soil profile hole information. The applicant is Lorraine and Doug Smith. The agent is fist landserving. Janelle is in the audience if there's any questions. When approving variances, we take a two-pronged approach. For prong one, number one, proposed lot one is vacant of structures and thus does not require any septic. Number two, the neighborhood is residential with large lots. Percolation tests and profile hole information are required at the time of building permit. Number three, percolation tests and eight-foot deep profile hole information are required for any lot or subdivision that will utilize an onsite wastewater treatment system. Any plans to develop proposed lot one would require soil profile and percolation test information and be submitted during the building permit process. Number four, the current comprehensive plan identifies the property as rural residential district, which requires a three-acre lot size. Proposed lot one and two will be seventeen point oh four and three acres respectively. Number five, waiving percolation profile hole information should not harm the public safety, health, or general welfare of the community. Percolation tests and profile hole information is required to develop the property at the time of the building permit. For prong two, does a special condition exist to grant the variance? No, there is no special condition that would warrant granting this request. However, any plans to develop proposed lot one would require soil profile and percolation test information be submitted during the building permit process. Currently on the property, it says it's vacant of any structures. Our tract didn't have any building permits for it. However, upon, for the research, there is a house with a garage on there. The building permits were put on a separate parcel back in two thousand. The lot was, was split and those permits weren't ever transferred over to the lot. So it looks like the lot's vacant. Access to the property is off of Nicky Oak Road. There is no special flood hazard area on the subject property. This was routed around for interdepartmental review and no objections or concerns were received. The applicant is required, is applying for subdivision regulation variance as part of the plating process to subdivide the subject property into two lots. Layout plan LPL twenty-one dash zero five will be heard May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting and the June first Board of Commissioners meeting. Therefore, staff is recommending denial. There is no special condition that exists on the property to grant this request. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff recommends the following condition be included, that this variance to waive percolation tests and soil profile hole information only be for proposed lot one of RDS subdivision and not any further development.
Questions to Cody?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So Cody, this nineteen acres, what they want to do is eventually build a house on there?
I'm not, I'm not sure what they, what they're planning to do with it. That would be more of a question for Janelle.
But I go back maybe a few months ago when we were discussing the twelve lots off of the Hill City Keystone Road. Those lots were going to be five acres. And we did, we waived that because when you got five acres and you got a house with a two thousand square foot footprint, you have no idea. You could put your, you could do all your tests and then decide to build your house somewhere else. So this is where I'm having a problem with the denial. Because I think that's a special condition that they don't know where they want to place their residence at some point in the future. And they couldn't build a home and get a building permit anyhow until they did do a perk test. So it's got to get done sooner or later. They're just saying, do we have to do it now because we don't know where we're going to put the house? Or, that's the way I interpret it.
So Cody, what do you, sorry, Chairman. So how are you interpreting it, Cody? Is that the same thing? You don't know where the house is and stuff at this point?
So we just, part of the subdivision is just a requirement that somewhere on the lot, a perk and profile is, is done. When looking at the special, there's no special condition that would not allow them to go dig an eight-foot profile hole and do the perk test.
So they could do it.
That's what the special condition is.
This is saying they'll never do it, no matter what? It's just saying they won't do it right now. Because I thought when we decided this, when we did building permits, that's when, I thought I talked with Brittany, that we would do, like, when they pulled a building permit to build the house, that's when they'd do the perk test.
Correct, and in the, in the future, we are, I believe when we're going through our subdivision regulations, I believe that the perk and profile requirement is going to be taken out. But until that time, subdivision regulation variance is required.
Okay, so that's what Ron is saying, is that, that's why we'd probably grant that variance just for that reason, is because it will be done later and it won't be going against statute at any point or time. It's just that we want them to be able to move forward and then do the perk test once they figure out where the house is.
Correct, and similar variances have been approved.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner La Croix.
Let's, Janelle, I've got a motion.
Okay, Janelle, would you?
No, I don't blame you. I'd make a motion to approve SV twenty-one oh six with one condition. First of all, I agree with the staff's prong on the first part, but by granting this variance, I don't, I don't think it runs counter to the public interest. The special condition that exists that I believe is that by performing the, special condition exists is, just as Mr. Roskin said, not knowing where the structure is going to be built. So I think that, that is a special condition to me. And I think that excuses little enforcement of the ordinance and enforcement causes unnecessary hardship because by doing this, then you're performing multiple tests in my, so I grant, by granting this, I not only observe the ordinance's spirit, I ensure substantial justice is done.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Roskin for the discussion. Janelle, is there something you'd like to add to this?
No, just thank you and there are no plans to build at this time. So that Commissioner Roskin's comments about the sighting being a qualifier, not knowing where on this nineteen acres you're going to put this, that would be my comment. But thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, one question. If they did a profile hole and they waited three years, that, that would expire, wouldn't it? And they'd have to do another one? They're only good for so long, right? When you do a profile hole?
Code SAC Environmental Planner. Yes, they're good for two years. However, an exception can be granted if it's deemed reasonable. So if it's a month after it's, two years is up, the planning department can grant an exception through the two oh four J ordinance.
I'm just thinking from experience, when I did that, you know, a year and a half later, I had to do it again. And so I'm just trying to be friendly to the general public, that's all.
Further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item D.
Morning again, Commissioners. Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item D is subdivision regulations variance twenty-one dash zero seven to waive the requirement for percolation tests and soil profile information. The applicant and landowner is David Stone. Other affected landowners is the David Homes, or Davis Homestead Reserve LLC. Site location is two zero 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 four Willsey Road. Proposed lot size is forty point zero one acres. Currently zoned agriculture district. Staff recommends denial as there is no special condition that exists to grant this variance request. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff recommends the following condition be included, that this variance to waive percolation tests and soil profile hole information is only for proposed lot B of Guy Davis Homestead and not for any further development or subdivision of this lot. Again, as you've seen already this morning, we utilize a two-pronged approach to base our recommendations. Starting with prong one, I'll read staff's responses. Prong one, whether granting variances runs counter to the public interest. Starting with number one, no, proposed lot B contains only historic homestead structures that are not habitable and rarely accessed. Number two, yes, the neighborhood is agricultural in nature. Nature existing historical structures are not habitable and have no means of wastewater disposal. Number three, percolation tests and eight-foot deep soil profile hole information are required for any lot or subdivision that utilize an onsite wastewater disposal systems. The applicant has no plans to develop lot B. Therefore, the lot we utilize onsite wastewater will not utilize onsite wastewater disposal systems. Any plans to develop lot B would require soil profile hole and percolation test information to be submitted during the building permit application intake process. Number four, yes, the current comprehensive plan identifies the subject property as agriculture district, which requires a ten-acre minimum lot size. Proposed lot B will be forty acres. Number five, no, existing historical structures are not habitable and have no means of onsite wastewater disposal. The applicant has no plans to develop lot B. And prong two, whether special conditions exist to grant the variance? Staff found no, there are no special conditions that would warrant granting this request. However, any plans to develop proposed lot B would require soil profile and percolation test information to be submitted during the building permit intake process.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
I agree with prong one, with the staff's findings. The special enforcing the, enforcing the ordinance create an unnecessary hardship. Basically, the hardship would be to do it now, not knowing where the house would be at this time. And does it grant the variance, observe the ordinance spirit while doing substantial justice? I believe so because the justice would be the percolation building permit. The percolation test would be done during the building permit process and still followed through. So it observes the ordinance and what we're doing on our variances or ordinances, but still has the spirit of doing substantial justice for the applicant.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Roskin for the discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Jason, did we do a site inspection on that property?
I did not do a site inspection on that property.
It says six north, seventeen east. I'm guessing that's way up in the north.
It is, it's as far, it's as far northeast as you can get in the county.
Probably be good hunting up there.
Might be.
Great.
So is David Stone or Davis Homestead Reserve in attendance?
Yes, sir.
Would they like to speak relative to this?
Hello, we're just trying to save my granddad's.
And your, your name?
Oh, sorry, David Stone.
Okay.
And we're just trying to save an acreage with my granddad's land on it. The brothers and sisters go out maybe once or twice a year to ride horses and things. We have, there's no outhouses or anything out there because we know that doesn't meet the requirements anymore. And we have no plans in the future of ever developing it for it. And that's, that's just basically what we're trying to do. We're selling the rest of the land to a neighbor and we just want to keep that so we can, we're hopefully going to restore some of the building, but we'll see. Log structures are difficult.
Very good. Questions of Mr. Stone? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Item E.
Item E is subdivision regulations variance twenty-one dash zero eight to waive the requirement to dedicate and improve section line right-of-way. The applicant again is David Stone. Other affected landowner is Davis Homestead Reserve LLC. Same location as the last request, same property. Staff recommends denial. There are no special conditions that exist to grant this variance request. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff recommends the following condition be included, that the section line be dedicated and improved to ordinance fourteen standards if a habitable structure is ever placed or constructed on proposed lot B. Again, we use the two-pronged approach, starting with number one. Staff finds no, proposed lot B contains only historical homestead structures that are not habitable and rare, habitable and rarely accessed. Number two, no, the neighborhood is agricultural in nature. Improved rights-of-way do not exist to provide access to proposed lot B. Number three, no. Where an existing section line right-of-way or a portion of section line right-of-way is located within new subdivision or adjoining any portion of new subdivision, the entire sixty-six feet of section line right-of-way shall be dedicated and improved by the developer. Number four, yes, the current comprehensive plan identifies the property as agriculture district, which requires a ten-acre minimum lot size. Proposed lot B will be forty acres. Number five, no, Willsey Road is an existing right-of-way that could be used to provide access to proposed lot B for emergency response purposes. Ingress and egress to lot B for any other reason would be via unimproved section line and private access easement. And lastly, prong two, does a special condition exist? Staff finds no. The topography of the section line appears to be near river breaks and gradually slope. That gradually slopes downwards towards the north from Willsey Road for point nine mile. Elevation beginning at Willsey Road is two thousand two hundred and thirty feet and ending where the easement begins to the access. If you can see here on the map, kind of follow along with what I'm saying. So Willsey Road is here to the bottom of the map, starting at the red line and traverses point nine mile up to the private access easement, which would continue east to access the proposed lot in green. would continue east to access the proposed lot in green. As the property sit, there's two properties in question here. One property has three historical structures, as well as an outhouse, has been filled and non-functional. The other property has a hunting cabin with no means of onsite wastewater removal. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and the county highway department did respond stating that the highway department is opposed to granting variances for roads built within section lines. Staff's analysis of the request is that the planning commission recommended approval of layout plan twenty-one twenty-three on May tenth of this year. The Board of Commissioners will hear this request later on in this meeting, and approval of this variance will satisfy condition number six of that layout plan and allow the planning process to continue. And again, staff recommends denial.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddcock.
So I agree with prong one, with the staff's findings. The second part is, the special condition is, at this time, on the section line, they wouldn't be using that road, so the standards wouldn't need to be improved. But in, in the variance, observant of the spirit of the ordinance and doing substantial justice, when they do develop, I think that the section line be dedicated and proved to ordinance fourteen standards. And that's based on if a habitable structure is ever placed or construction on proposed lot B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Haddcock, second by Commissioner Rosskneck to approve. Further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item F.
Cody's a environmental planner. Item F is subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one dash zero nine. It is to waive the requirement to submit percolation tests and profile hole information. The applicant is Shane Swedland. The agent is fist land surveying. Janelle is in the audience if there's any questions. Staff is recommending denial as there's no special conditions that exist to grant the variance request. If the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff recommends will the following condition be included, and that condition is that this variance to waive the percolation tests and soil profile hole information is only for lot one and two. When granting variances, we look at two prongs. For prong one, number one, proposed lot one and two contains only historic, ooh, is vacant of any structures. That's a typo, sorry. Number two, the neighborhood is residential in nature. Percolation tests and profile hole information be required at the time of the building permit application. Number three, percolation tests and eight-foot-deep profile hole information are required for any lot or subdivision that will utilize an onsite wastewater disposal system. The applicant has no plans or has plans to develop lots one and two in the future. Number four, the current comprehensive plan identifies the property as rural residential. Proposed lots one and two will be two point three acres, and the applicant has applied for lot size variance. Number five, waiving the percolation profile hole information should not harm the public in safety and health and general welfare. Percolation tests and soil profile hole information are required to develop the property at the time of a building permit. Number two, prong two, number one, does a special condition exist? There's no special condition that would be, would warrant granting this request. However, a building permit would, would require percolation profile hole tests. Currently on the property, it is vacant of any structures. There's no onsite wastewater treatment system. Access is off Marshall Gulch Road. There is one hundred-year flood plain on the property. On December fifteenth, twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved layout plan LPL twenty-nine thirty-five with fourteen conditions. Approval of this variance will satisfy condition three and will allow the planning process to continue. So again, staff is recommending denial.
Mr. Chair.
Chair.
Commissioner Rosskneck.
So the building envelope on this particular piece of property, because the proximity to the watershed is very small.
Correct. And in conversations with the applicants in the past on their layout plan, they plan on building within these areas right here, so their building area is actually restricted on this, on this lot unless they want to go through floodplain development permits.
I'll let my, uh, Janelle, Janelle speak.
Thank you. Good morning, Janelle. Thank you with fist land surveying here on behalf of the Swedlands. This property is owned jointly, excuse me, by two brothers, and they're separating their interests equally. So that's the purpose for dividing. They do not have a specific building plan in sight, you know, an intended building date. And the floodplain that you see based on the existing FEMA map is a little bit larger than the actual studied area. This is an unstudied area. We completed our analysis of it. So the building site actually is a little bit more generous, but there's ample building area on both of those lots to support either a traditional or non-traditional onsite waste disposal, whenever it is that they decide that they would like to proceed. And they would do their protest soil profiles when they're ready to build.
Mr. Chair. Any, Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd move to approve SV twenty-one dash oh seven with one condition. I believe, I agree the staff's reports on prong one, but I do think there are special conditions exist by not knowing exactly where they're going to put the property at this time. And I think by excusing literal enforcement of the ordinance, would cause unnecessary hardship to where they'd have to do multiple profile tests. But I believe we're following the spirit of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Haddcock for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carried.
Item G is subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one dash ten. It's to waive the requirement to dedicate and improve in an undeveloped section line right-of-way. The applicant and landowner shade Swedland. The applicant or the agent is fist land surveying. When approving variances, we look at two prongs. Prong number one, proposed lots one and two are vacant of any structures. Number two, the neighborhood is residential in nature. Improved rights-of-way do not, or do exist to provide access to proposed lots one and two. Number three, where an existing section line right-of-way or portion of section line right-of-way is located within a new subdivision or adjoining any portion of a new subdivision, the entire sixty-six feet of the section line right-of-way shall be dedicated and improved by the developer. Number four, the current comprehensive plan identifies the property as rural residential district, which requires a three-acre lot size minimum. Proposed lots one and two will be two point three acres. The applicant has applied for a lot size variance. Number five, Marshall Gulch Road is an existing right-of-way that is used to provide access to the proposed lots one and two for emergency responses. Number two, prong two, does a special condition exist to grant the variance? Topography of the section line is raised forty to eighty feet higher than the rest of the subject property. Also, access to the proposed lots is provided by an improved right-of-way of Marshall Gulch. A, yes, requiring the section line right-of-way be improved or dedicated would require the applicant to construct a second access road to the property when the existing access exists. And B, yes, the ordinance is in place to ensure that all lots of a proposed subdivision are provided access. Proposed lots one and two have an existing access off Marshall Gulch Road. This was, the layout plan was approved on December fifteenth, twenty twenty, by the Board of Commissioners. Grant this variance will satisfy condition three and allow the planning process to continue. So staff is recommending approval of subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one dash ten as there currently is an existing improved right-of-way for proposed lots one and two of Marshall Gulch subdivision number two.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve subdivision regulations variance SV twenty-one dash ten based on staff's findings.
Second.
And a second, right, Commissioner Haddcock. Further discussion? Are there none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? I'm sorry, Janelle?
I appreciate your consideration and I support your motion, but I would respectfully ask that we be refunded this application fee until we resolve the issue of why we can only submit a separate variance application on a separate form, because this wasn't the procedure or policy. I've, I've done, even as early as the last few months of this year, we've done multiple subdivision variance applications on the same form and not been charged a duplicate fee. And until we have a chance to resolve why this has been changed, I would ask that the fee be refunded for this separate application on this.
I'm going to take that as a separate motion if we're going to do it. I'll finish this up. All those in favor of the motion that was made to approve this indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddcock.
I don't think we could do it at this meeting, but we can look at that coming up further just to see if we're going to do that, not just for Janelle, but other people. So I would recommend that today wouldn't be a good time to, to make that motion or move that forward.
Okay.
In respect.
That's okay. Thank you.
The, the suggestion will be taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, Janelle.
Item H.
Morning again, Commissioners. Jason Thenson, Assistant Planning Director. Item item number, or letter H, is subdivision regulations variance twenty-one dash eleven to waive the requirement to dedicate and improve section line right-of-way. The applicant and landowner is Linden Bolt, acting on behalf of GL Development Company LLC. Location of the site is one-two-eight-zero-seven Old Hill City Road. Proposed lot, lot size is thirty point two seven acres. Current zoning is rural residential and ranch district. Existing land use is vacant and residential. Access is off Old Hill City Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Kind of, before I get into the, the whole prong approach and my recommendation, I just want to point out on the map here, this is a little bit more complicated than the other ones because there are two section lines instead of just one, as we've seen here previously. So just kind of keep that map in mind as I go through my prongs and my recommendation. There are no, or there are special conditions that exist to grant this variance request. Staff recommends approval with the following condition: That this variance only apply to the north and south portion of the section line separating sections two and three. The east and west portion of section line providing access to proposed lots one and two shall be dedicated and improved per ordinance fourteen standards. With that, I'll jump into the prongs, starting with prong one, and I'll bring up the layout plan so you have an idea of what we're talking about. The section lines are still identified on this map. You can see the proposed lots are on the screen as well. So starting with prong number one, access to proposed lots one and two will be via east and west portion of section line. Access to proposed lots two, or lots three through six will be provided through platted easements. Number two, yes, the proposed neighboring, the proposed neighborhood will be residential in nature. Number three, yes, in such instances where adjoining landowner may decline to participate in the right-of-way dedication, or if it is not practical or desirable to construct the street within the existing section line right-of-way, the Board of County Commissioners may authorize a new right-of-way where the developer will improve and dedicate the entire required street right-of-way within the boundaries of developing property. Number four, the current comprehensive plan identifies the properties as rural residential district and ranch district. A rezoning comprehensive plan amendment is required per layout plan twenty-one dash zero two. And number five, ingress and egress, egress and emergency response, access to proposed lots one and two will be via the east-west portion of section line, and access to proposed lots three through six will be provided through platted easements. And prong two, does a special condition exist? Yes, on the north-south portion of section line, topography is an issue. Access to proposed lots three through six will be provided through platted easements. It appears the locations of these easements were chosen to follow the topography of the proposed, proposed neighborhood and avoid rock outcroppings. However, the east-west portion of section line, there are no special conditions that exist on the section line to provide access to lots one and lot two. And prong two, if a special condition does exist, does enforcing the ordinance create an unnecessary hardship? Staff found yes. For the north-south portion of section line, ingress and egress, emergency response access to proposed lots three through six will be provided through platted easements, chosen to follow the topography. Improving the section line on this portion of the property may create an unnecessary hardship. However, the east-west portion of section line, ingress, egress and emergency response access to proposed lots one and two will be via the east-west portion of section line. And again, no unnecessary hardships, no unnecessary hardship exists with improving that portion of section line. And lastly, one be if granting, if a special circumstance exists, does granting the variance observe the ordinance spirit while doing substantial justice? Staff found yes, the ordinance's spirit is to ensure access is provided to proposed lots. The proposed platted easements will provide access to proposed lots three through six. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Highway did have comments stating that they are opposed to this variance. Roads, roads built within or along section lines shall be built to ordinance fourteen standards. No other objections or concerns were received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the Board of Commissioners approved layout plan twenty-one dash zero two on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Approval of this variance will satisfy condition number ten and allow the planning process to continue. And again, just to kind of reiterate, there are two portions of section lines being considered under this request.
Chairman.
One second, Commissioner Haddcock. I do have Eric Howard in the audience from Renter Associates. Is there something you want to present with this, or would you just like to answer questions if there are questions? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Haddcock.
Move to approve subdivision regulation, regulations variance SV twenty-one dash one-one based on staff's findings.
Second. We got a motion and a second?
Go ahead.
I'll speak, sir.
Come ahead.
Eric Howard with Renter and Associates. I'm the surveyor on this project. In regards to the east-west section line, the north half of that section line actually lands on forest service property, so therefore, there's only thirty-three feet to work with, as well as it runs parallel and within sixty feet of Old Hill City Road. While there's no topographic issues on the lots itself on this, as soon as it hits the property of the west, there are some topo concerns. And then as it continues to go to the west, within four hundred feet, it hits Old Hill City Road again. So alternately, we'd like to construct within the thirty-three feet with an access easement and provide an access, adequate access to lot one to the west.
Well, Chairman.
Commissioner Haddcock.
So Jason, tell us what he's saying. Eric's saying.
Okay, so on this east-west portion here, it's highlighted in blue. The northern portion of that, this parcel here is actually forest service land. So there's sixty-six feet, thirty-three feet on one side, thirty-three feet on the other. He's proposing to, well, he's stating that he can only improve this thirty-three feet to the south, which is on the subject property.
And how do we have it on our staff findings?
Staff recommends not approving, to waive dedication or improvements of this portion of section line. So in other words, we want this improved to ordinance fourteen standards.
You want the whole road instead of just the thirty-three feet? You want?
The thirty-three feet because we can't improve on forest service land.
So you understand that's what he's saying, Eric, is just that thirty-three feet?
Right, but if you look at the, you know, exhibit A and under ordinance fourteen, it requires twenty-four feet of gravel with side slopes and eight-foot ditches, the math doesn't work out. There's not enough space to, to build a section line highway and thirty-three foot road.
So Jason.
And at this point, I think I'd bring Joe up here since he's the ordinance fourteen expert.
Yes, but I'm saying, based on planning, what do we usually do on that when it's the other half of forest service? Colin, you got to say something. Come on, Colin.
I call McNeese State's Attorney's Office. With forest service, we can't touch that.
Right.
So it would just be the thirty-three feet that the state has to stretch over.
So you understand we're just talking about that thirty-three feet, but you?
Right, but also, you know, it states to construct all the way to the west property line, rather than to the, the proposed lot.
Okay, so that's, we want you in these standards to do the whole top part instead of just your part.
Right. Well, well, the whole thing from the east, where it intersects Hill City Road, all the way to the west side of the property.
But the only one that you're working on and this, this reg is for is just the right side of that screen.
Yeah, I believe he's only talking from this portion where the green line is to Old Hill City Road.
Okay.
Correct.
And this subdivision regulation variance is for basically just that property that we're talking about today?
It's the whole, it's actually the whole property that.
So why wouldn't you do the whole to get to that one, Eric?
Well, you got that plot pulled up?
I guess, why would, why would you?
Okay, so we're proposing, right here is this, this section line they're talking about.
Yes.
So, you know, we want to construct access, obviously, to lot one to here.
Right.
But providing a gravel road to here serves no value. But providing a gravel road to here serves no value. Um, you know, their Old Hill City Road runs right here within sixty feet to provide access for the public. So what we're proposing.
So when someone does lot one, then they would do the ordinance fourteen standards? You're just doing lot two today?
No, we're doing, this is all part, this is all together.
Okay, so, so if you're going to develop both, why wouldn't, why wouldn't you do both?
Why would you not construct a gravel road here?
All the way across.
It doesn't, does, it doesn't serve anything. It's, right here's, like I said, right here's, uh, Old Hill City Road, it's within sixty feet. And then about four hundred feet right here, this road comes right back in, 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 intersects the section line.
Okay, and the other side doesn't have the same issues? As what you just said, it has Old City, it's the Hill City Road?
Right, but this is where they're gaining, this is where they're actually going to be gaining access. It will not, nobody will be gaining access from, from this, this half.
Thank you, Eric. Joe?
I've got a motion and a second.
I think Joe wants to speak.
I just had, uh, Sean brought up a point here. Uh, you guys currently have access to that large lot, uh, off of Old Hill City, right? Right here for lot two.
Yeah.
If approved, uh, you likely need another, or a second approach approved for lot two. I believe we missed that in our, our staff findings. But if you have two approaches by ordinance, you can only have one approach per lot. So you'll need a second approach for, for lot two, depending on where you wanting access.
We were gonna, we were gonna access lot two off of, uh, section line.
Okay, so then you'll have to remove the other approach.
Or ask for an exception.
Say that again, Joe, then what?
There's currently an approach approximately right here that's accessing this, this larger lot. Where do I gotta go? Uh, where's the, right here is the approach for lot two. This is the current access for these homes, or for this home. So once they improve this section line, they're gonna take access off of the section line for lot two. Either a variance will need to be granted for ordinance fourteen for a second approach, or this approach will have to go.
Well, that, that approach will serve for all the rest of the.
The house down below, Joe.
So, there's still gonna be two accesses to lot two, is what I'm trying to say. And if that's the case, it, then there needs to be another variance granted to ordinance fourteen.
So Eric, can I ask you some? Are you granting an easement or something? Because isn't that, if you?
Yeah, that was, that was, excuse me, that was the intent, was to, to, uh, grant a kind of access.
Let, let them have the second approach and grab an easement through that.
Well, it changes things now, I think, a little bit here, that you do have to get a variance for this. I don't think that, that was the intent. Um, you know, we were not going to take access off ser, off of this road for lot two. There's a non-access easement being created on the plat. So access here was only going to be from here, and access to lot one was also from the same section line.
So how's lot four getting access again?
Right here through this, uh, this road right here.
Okay, but that's gonna be easement, right?
Granted, that'll be easement, that is correct.
Okay, so that you'll need that approach, so you'll have to ask for a second approach on, because you have two approaches on one lot, even though it's two, a different?
Well.
Am I correct?
I guess so. Um, yeah, I, I mean, what, what, what we don't want to do is have to get into the variance game here. I mean, we just want to get this moving forward. Um, the intent was to take off the section line, which, um, they're be, they're requiring us to construct it.
Right.
Whether, whether behalf of it or all of it. And then there's existing approach right here, so we don't, you know, to have to ask for a variance for a requirement that's being created. Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure.
What he's saying is one lot cannot have two approaches legally? So you'd have to ask for an exception to that? I don't know if it's a variance?
So.
Or just an exception with Highway Department to go and say?
You guys have to approve it.
Yes, I know, but you know what I'm saying? They'd have to ask you and, and have you agree?
So even, even if, even if this is a non-access easement, you still have to have a second?
You, you'd have to change your lot lines because currently you're accessing lot two off Old Hill City, and then up here with your section line, you're still accessing lot two.
Even though, even though that we're shutting the access off on.
Uh, you, you are, but you're not, right? I mean, the, the access is still going to lot two in our world.
Okay.
You're gonna have two wor, two approaches to lot two.
Even though it's going to lot four? One of them is, yes. But it's two access points in one lot, Eric?
I understand what you're saying.
So is that a variance, um, Jason, or is that just an exception from the?
It would be a variance to ordinance fourteen standards.
Okay. Understand, Eric?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just trying to figure out how to, to prevent, uh, going through the variance process, delay in the process even farther.
I think you're not going to get away with that because you're gonna, you're gonna need that second access for that lot. And then number two, does this, what we're approving today, make you approve that whole section line, or?
That's, that's the question, yeah.
Okay, so we can, we can actually change it to the thirty-three feet just on lot two and not have it do lot one and two?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you want to amend? Amend your motion to clarify that?
So, this is I M G, right? Or H? So where's all your variance to north portion of section line? So that the variance only apply to the north and south portion of the section line? And that the west portion of the section line providing access to proposed lots one and two shall be dedicated and proved to fourteen standards? Right? And not the east? Because that's, lot one is east and this is west.
So in my, uh, in my condition, I refer to that section line, just the east-west portion of section line. So if you wanted to limit that, you'd have to specify how much of that section of line?
So, so east we wouldn't do because it already has access, right? And west we have to do because that isn't access. So we need to bring the west portion right up to section line to access lots two shall be dedicated and proved to ordinance fourteen standards, right? West portion of section line providing access to proposed lot two shall be dedicated and proved to ordinance fourteen standards. Right?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
That'd be the change.
Okay, so I'll ask Kara, Kara is able to?
No, you'll have to repeat it or I can get.
Okay, so the staff recommendations is there are special condiz, conditions that exist to grant this variance. Staff recommends approval with the following condition. In this case, I don't know if staff recommended this, but we are, if this goes through, that the west portion of the section line providing access to proposed lot two shall be dedicated and improved to ordinance fourteen standards.
Is there a second to that? Amendment to the motion? Second. Got a motion and a second to amend the motion. So we're dealing with the amendment first. Uh, any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amended motion, uh, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So what you're thinking, Eric? Thanks, Jason, sorry.
No problem at all.
Okay, need a motion to adjourn the Board of Adjustment and reconvene as the Board of Commissioners.
I move.
Second.
I got a motion from Commissioner La Croix, second from Commissioner Laster, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains, contains the following one item. Item I is minor plat MPL twenty-one-twenty for Dale and Luanne Russell, and approval is recommended.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
I've got a, I've got a motion, uh. First of all, was there anybody here that wanted this item moved from consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll accept that motion from, uh, was it Commissioner Roskinect that made the motion?
Correct.
And Commissioner La Croix, Commissioner Laster, the seconded. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're on the regular agenda items.
Cody. Cody. Uh, Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item J is the second reading of ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash zero-six. It's to amend section five-oh-seven-I-five-B construction permits. The Planning Commission recommended approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash zero-six, and the Board of Commissioners approved the first reading of ordinance amendment on May fourth, twenty-twenty-one, changing the wording from, uh, if the disturbance is greater than five acres to greater than three acres. So staff is recommending approval.
Got a motion from Commissioner Hadcock to approve.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Laster, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
Item K is the second reading of ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash zero-seven for Pennington County to amend section two-oh-two, the official zoning map of the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission recommended approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash zero-seven, and the Board of Commissioners approved the first reading of this ordinance amendment on May fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
Move approval.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Hadcock to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Laster. I, I do not have any speaker request forms up here, so I'm not calling for public comment. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item L is vacation of section line right-of-way VS twenty-one dash zero-two for the city of Rapid City to vacate one thousand two-hundred-and-fifty-one-point-five-one feet of section line right-of-way. Uh, staff is recommending to continue the vacation of the section line right-of-way VS twenty-one dash zero-two per the applicant's request, and we are recommending to continue this indefinitely. The county legal team and the city's legal team need to meet and discuss a couple items on this. Feel moved.
Second.
Got a commission by Commissioner Hadcock and a second by Commissioner Laster to approve further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item M.
When we said move stuff forward, you guys really did this time. That's a lot of planning stuff. Thank you.
One second, I apologize for the delay. Well, we're just gonna press forward. So, um, agenda item M is relocation of section line RS twenty-one dash zero-one. The applicant is Lyndon Bolt, on behalf of GL Development Company LLC. Current zoning is ranchette district. Existing land use is residential and also vacant.
I'll move approval.
Commissioner Hadcock moved approval, second by Commissioner La Croix. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item.
Make it easy on you, Jason.
Uh, Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Agenda item N is road construction within a section line right-of-way CS twenty-one dash zero-two. It is to construct a road within the section line right-of-way to provide access to a property located in sections twenty-five and thirty-six, Township two N and Range four E. The applicant is Had, is Hadley Eisenvice and Kristin Brost. The applicant is, kind of be doing minimal improvements to the section line, uh, therefore, there will be no ordinance fourteen standards that will be met. Uh, the road will be adjusted to two-track trail with minimal improvements. There currently is no structures on the property. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. The County Highway commented, while the County Highway is typically opposed to variances for roads within a section line, the Highway Department would not be opposed to this variance for driving across the section line. Uh, the two-track trail that'll cross the section line will be used to access the proposed garage set on, on the property. Uh, therefore, staff is recommending approval of road construction within a section line right-of-way CS twenty-one dash zero-two with eight conditions.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner La Croix, second by Commissioner Hadcock for the discussion. I was just reading through those conditions. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item O.
Uh, item O is the request not to submit engineered road construction plans and to waive all the requirements for ordinance fourteen standards. The applicant is just doing a minimal two-track trail to, uh, access an accessory structure on his property, and minimal improvements will be made. Therefore, staff's recommending approval.
Is there a motion?
This, this is O, right?
Yep.
Move to approve the request to waive the requirements, not to submit engineered road construction plans and to waive requirements of order fourteen.
Have a motion by Commissioner La Croix, second by Commissioner Laster for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item P is layout plan LPL twenty-one dash sixteen to create lot twelve R revised of block five of the Northdale subdivision. Uh, as the property sits today, it is, just consists of one lot, and they actually want to add on a north portion of this property, uh, to include it in their current lot. Uh, this plat has to be heard by both, uh, the County Commission in Pennington County and the County Commission in Mead County, uh, because a portion of the lot to the north is within Mead County. As the property sits today, uh, there is a building permit for a daycare center. This daycare center was converted into a residential structure back in two thousand fifteen. There are two approaches on this property. This was routed around, and that was one of the comments that the Highway Department, um, that the other approach will need to get, uh, variance from this board. Um, also, emergency services said there's two address points on this property which will have to be addressed, and those are items of, uh, approval. I did talk to the surveyor this morning. There was some concern, um, that the new creation of that lot A revised, that it appears to be an isolated tract. Uh, he had indicated that there are easements that have been filed with registered deeds, so that condition has been met on this layout plan. Uh, staff doesn't see any, um, issue with this layout plan. It appears to be in harmony with the existing land uses in the area, and we are recommending approval.
Planning Commission did not see any issues with it. Commissioner Hadcock?
So I agree, um, Planning Commission with, Planning Commission recommendation to move approval layout plan LPL twenty-one dash sixteen with eleven conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, got a motion from Commissioner Hadcock, second by Commissioner Roskinect to approve. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Morning again, Commissioners, Jason Thenson, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item Q is layout plan twenty-one dash eighteen to subdivide and create Rudd tract. The applicants and landowners are Alvin and Lois Rudd. Other affected landowners are Stanley and Marvin Negabaler. Their agent is Anderson Engineers. Site location is near the intersection of Highway seventy-nine and Doffing Bow Road. Proposed lot size is forty-point-six acres, currently zoned agriculture district. As the property sits today, uh, you can see lot A is the larger portion to the north, and lot B is the smaller. Uh, lot A is two-hundred-and-eighty-nine acres, uh, vacant of any utilities or structures. Lot B is, uh, ten acres currently, uh, contains a single-family residence as well as an onsite wastewater treatment system. You can see the proposed lot, uh, on the right. Will go to forty-eight-point-six acres, will contain the single-family residence as well as the onsite wastewater treatment system. Uh, the request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Staff received no concerns or objections, and the applicant's request appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval with conditions.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner La Croix, second by Commissioner Laster to approve further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Agenda item R is layout plan twenty-one dash twenty-three to create lot B of Guy Davis Homestead. The applicant and landowner is David Stone. His surveyor is Bros Engineer. Other affected landowners are Davis, is Davis Homestead Reserve LLC. Site location is off. Site location is off of Wilsey Road. Proposed lot size is forty acres. Current zoning is agricultural district as well as the use at this time. Uh, as the properties sit today, uh, you can see the two properties. The first one is on the left, uh, the other one is on the right. That first property contains three historical structures which are not habitable, and they do not contain any on, any means of onsite wastewater treatment. Uh, the second lot is on the right, which contains a cabin place there in the eighties, and it does not have a means of onsite wastewater treatment as well. Access is provided via unimproved section line and fifty-foot wide access easement. There's no special flood hazard area on the property. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County highway stated any roads built along or within section lines will be built to ordinance fourteen standards. No other conge, no other concerns or objections were received. Staff's analysis of the request is that we find, um, there's no significant issues with this, with this request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. Uh, just to note that, uh, subdivision regulations variance twenty-one dash zero-seven and zero-eight were approved today, and that will satisfy conditions number five and six of staff's recommended conditions of approval.
Move to approve. Got a motion by Commissioner Lassiter and second by Commissioner La Croix to approve for the discussion. Are there none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Chairman. I could move to continue item S and item T to July, July sixth meeting, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Commissioner meetings.
I've got a motion to continue both items S and T by Commissioner Hadcock. Is there a second?
Second.
And by Commissioner Lassiter. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item U is preliminary plat PPL twenty-one dash seventeen. It's to subdivide and creates, uh, five R and five B of Lau subdivision. The landowner is Keith and Loan Alau. The surveyors, DC Scott surveyors. Currently, as the property sits, there is a fifty-four by twenty-eight farm utility building that was built in nineteen fifty-eight with an addition that was also built in nineteen fifty-eight. There's a double-wide manufacturer home with an attached garage and a covered patio that was built in two thousand and fifteen, and a twenty by ten prefabricated, um, storage shed that was built in twenty sixteen that got a building permit in two thousand and twenty-one. There is an onsite wastewater treatment system on the property. Access is off High Seega Road. There is no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, lot five A of Lau subdivision will be three point three-two acres and will contain all of the structures that were listed before. Lot five B will be one acre, uh, zoned rural resident, rural residential district, which will require a lot size variance or a rezone, and it'll be vacant of any structures. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. Uh, county highway came back and said that access to both lots should be from the shared approach and the thirty-three foot wide road easement. Uh, as stated earlier, a rezone and lot size variance will be required for lot five B. Uh, percolation and profile hole information are also required for lot five B or subdivision regulation variance to waive these requirements. Uh, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with the existing lot, lots, lots and land use in the area. This was heard before the Planning Commission at the May tenth meeting, where no recommendation from the Planning Commission occurred, as the motion to approve died for a lack of second. Um, but staff is recommending approval of PPL twenty-one dash zero-five with seven conditions.
Move to approve preliminary plat PPL twenty-one dash seventeen with seven conditions.
Second.
Chairman.
I've got a motion and a second by Commissioner Roskinak, second by Commissioner La Croix, uh, for the discussion.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hadcock.
So what was all the discussion, and why the, why was it such a, uh, issue at planning? How about that?
Uh, the, the discussion was that in the past, um, I believe around two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, the applicant, um, applied for rezone and did some subdividing, and the neighbors were concerned with density. And there was a commissioner who was concerned that, the applicant said that this was it. This is what I wanted, what I wanna do. I don't wanna subdivide anymore in the future. And he came in and is now subdividing again, and the commissioner had concerns with that. Um, therefore, there was a, a motion, uh, to approve, but there was no second.
Yeah. That, that's my issue with agreeing that people aren't ever gonna subdivide. Then they go and subdivide. And then, does it cause a density issue? Does it cause a percolation or a, any kind of issue when they make that lot smaller? Uh, Cody, by chance, I mean, what, what is gonna be the hardship on here once they try to subdivide this?
Uh, the, it'll just increase the, increase the area by one lot, um, that thirty-three foot wide road, Wheaton Road. Um, there'll be another access off of it. Um, from my understanding, the reason why Mr. Alau is subdividing is, um, I believe that his health is, is, is deteriorating, and he needs help, and his son is going to live on that other lot. Um, from my under, from my understandings with conversations with DC Scott.
Can he not do an accessory building or something like that instead of subdivide this lot?
He could, he could apply for a conditional use permit for a caretaker's residence if that, if that truly is the case. Like I said, this came from DC Scott, so I don't. Um, I spoke with the applicant this morning, and he didn't state any, any of, any of that. He was just wondering what he needed to do for his rezone.
Do you, and you have a zoning map, and the rest of the area, there is what?
So everything to the south is suburban residential. Uh, everything in yellow would be considered the rural residential.
So if he subdivided, he would still be in rural residential?
One lot would be. He would have to rezone the second lot to, uh, low-density residential or suburban residential, or get a lot size variance to remain rural residential.
But he could still comply in low-density residential, which the area is?
Um, currently as it sits, it is, um, low-density residential in the past required a three-acre lot size. That was changed to, um, rural residential.
Okay.
Um, which still requires your three-acre lot size. Um, the current low-density residential is a half acre now. Uh, so the one acre would not, would not meet the requirement for rural residential.
Okay, so we're subdividing. Tell me, tell me what the acreage is on each lot again?
It'll be one acre for lot. Lot five B and three point three-two acres for lot five A. Five A will meet the requirement, five B will not.
And the whole area is basically five A?
Correct. For surrounding him to the south, he does have suburban residential.
And he told us he wasn't gonna subdivide, so to me, it seems easier for him to do accessory. If that's what he really wants to do, then change the whole area into smaller lot sizes. Especially when the whole area is following five A. And to the north, it looks like they've got highway service, but then there's ag. You're only gonna have one suburban residential lot, which would be one A instead of doing accessory building. Colin?
Commissioner Hadcock, I just wanted to say that I believe the, uh, accessory dwelling unit, uh, ordinance, uh, should come in in June ninth, early June sometime, so that could be an option. Uh, as well, speaking to your point of an accessory dwelling unit.
Instead of changing the whole district into one piece of spot zoning of suburban residential.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay.
Cody?
Correct. Uh, if that's what the board would, would recommend, I would recommend continuing it until we can talk to Mr. Alau and, and confirm with him that that's really what the request is for.
Yeah, 'cause if, if he's taking care of him and something happens, that the guy might wanna just, you know, leave it at that and take over the whole property instead of subdividing and causing more tax issues and other stuff, just in case you might wanna know that.
Yeah, so I, I, I think staff would change their recommendation to continue it until the June first Board of Commissioners meeting, so we can discuss with Mr. Alau his options.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
Uh, just a second. We've already got a motion.
Motion on the table, so.
I made the motion. Lloyd, second.
Are you gonna substitute it?
I'll substitute it.
A second.
My substitute is to continue.
Have a substitute motion?
Yes, sir. To June first, sir.
And is there a second to the substitute?
Yes, Lassiter.
Lassiter. Uh, so all those in favor of the substitute motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item V.
Item V is layout plan LPL twenty-one dash nineteen. It's to reconfigure lot lines to create lot six R and seven R of Pine and Metal Subdivision. The applicant and landowner is Thomas Berry. The surveyor is Britten Engineering. Currently, as the properties sit, uh, tax ID eight zero eight-four, the property to the south, the two-two-eight-seven-nine Pine Metals Court, has a single-family residence that was built in nineteen seventy-one, a residential garage that has an improved building permit. Uh, however, there is a thirteen by sixteen guest cottage and a eight by twelve tool shed that do not have building permits that were built after nineteen ninety-four, so they require building permits. And the lot to the north, tax ID eight zero eight-three, is vacant of any structures. Access to the property is off Pine Metals Court. There is special flood hazard area on the property, including floodway on the southwest portion of the southern property. For the proposed lots, lot six R to the north will be vacant of any structures, will be point nine-six-five acres. This is served by a community water system, so it can go under one acre, the one acre requirement for septic. And lot seven R will be one point four zero five acres and will ha, contain all the structures that were mentioned previously. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns received. Uh, a rezone or lot size variance is required. This is currently rural residential, which requires three-acre lot size, and they will be under one acre and one point four acres. A building permit will be required for the guest cottage and tool shed, and a conditional use permit will be required for the guest cottage. As for the layout plan, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing land uses in the area. So staff is recommending approval with sixteen conditions.
Is Mr. Berry or his representative here?
No, I do not believe so.
Okay, I ju, I just wanna point out that, we're requiring these building permits. These are not buildings that were built by the current owners. These are, are built by somebody previous to ninety-four. Is that what I understood?
No, these were built, um, after two thousand, I believe, like two thousand and one, two thousand and two.
Okay, but by a previous owner.
I'm, I'm not sure if Mr. Berry was the person who built them, or if the previous owner was the one who built them. There's been no.
I think, I think at the planning commission the other day, we was told that it was not. Mr. Berry that built this, so.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Hadcock.
Any of those buildings that they built, are they in the floodway?
No.
Okay.
Uh, there is, there is floodway in the property, but it's kind, it's a cliff, so it just shows up on that southern, southern portion.
Thank you. Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a, and a second, uh, by Commissioner Hadcock and Commissioner La Croix to approve, uh, for the discussion. Are there none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item W.
Item W is layout plan LPL twenty-one dash twenty-one. It is to subdivide and create tract one and two and well lot of Policki subdivision. Uh, that, the landowner and applicant is Catherine Policki. The surveyor is baseline surveying. Currently, as the property sits, there's a single-family residence, a forty-eight by sixty barn, sixty by forty feeder shelter, a forty-eight by sixty-four shop, and a forty-eight by thirty farm building, all of which have valid building permits. There are two septics on the property. Access to the property is off High Seega Road. There is no special flood hazard area on the property. For the proposed lots, tract one will be twenty-three point eight-five acres and will contain all of the structures and septics that were listed above. Tract two will be six point one-two acres and will be vacant, and well lot will be zero point two-one acres. This was routed around for a comment. The county highway department, uh, said that approach permit must be obtained for tract two. And the registered deeds came back and said that the plaque book and page number and page information in the formally should be removed, but the certificates appear to be the required certificates per state statute. Percolation tests and profile hole information improvement will be required for lot two, and, uh, or subdivision regulation variance be obtained by the applicant, and a variance for dedicating, uh, an improvement of the section line will also need to be obtained. For the purposes of a layout plan, staff not finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with the existing lots and current land uses in the area. So staff is recommending approval of LPL twenty-one dash twenty-one with eight conditions.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner La Croix. Is there a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Lassiter. Further discussion. Are there none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Chairman.
Item X, Commissioner Hadcock.
Move to continue comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-one dash zero-six to July sixth Board of Commissioner meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hadcock, second by Commissioner Lassiter to continue item X, uh, till July sixth. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item Y is public hearing of comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-one dash zero-nine. Approval by resolution for Pennington County to amend the existing comprehensive plan view to twenty forty, section three point one land use designations and standards, figure three dash one future land use map, page three dash fifteen. The Planning Commission recommended approval of comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-one dash zero-nine.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hadcock. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lassiter. Uh, further discussion. Are there none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So I told you, told you at the last meeting we'd get through the alphabet. So we're, item Z, uh, it's a road advisory committee, proposed member composition and meeting dates. Um, so staff had discussed, um, the formation of this road advisory committee, and we're proposing, um, these, the following members, the highway superintendent or assistant superintendent, the highway engineer, the planning director or assistant director, an environmental planner, a county commissioner, a planning commissioner, the fire coordinator or a representative from emergency management, and one at-large member, another county employee maybe in a different department. Um, we're proposing the following meeting dates and times, once per month on the third Thursday at three o'clock. Um, and the first order of business that we're proposing is to establish the meeting procedures, roles, and responsibilities, and formulate purpose, goals, objectives of the committee, and then bring them back in front of this board.
Hate to ask you this, Ron, but I think you're the one that, uh, brought this up, so are you willing to be the commissioner to serve on this?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So, uh, pretty well lays it out, uh, the members that would be on there. Uh, they have to select a, um, a planning commissioner. I would, I would recommend the planning commission to make that selection. And, um, and then the only other is a at-large, uh, county employee member. That would be, otherwise, the others are all designated. Is that not right, Brittany?
That is correct. Is there any suggestions at another at-large county?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
So would we have alternates to, like our other committees? If for some reason I couldn't make it, should we assign an alternate commissioner, or we just, uh?
I think they're good without one. It'd just be you, Ron.
Just a question. It would be up to this board, um, to give you some ground, make that decision.
And we'll see how it goes, and then we can work that out later.
There's a.
Lloyd's, uh, the alternate on anybody that doesn't show up.
Well, I, I would presume, Brittany, that once it gets started, that it might not have to be a monthly meeting, it might. So I guess that'll just have to take its time to figure that out also, so.
Correct.
Cause this establishes that it wants, wants a month.
Correct, and I think it's gonna take a little bit to get the purpose, the goals, and get those things. Um, that usually is the, the hardest part, essentially, and then once you get those established, then moving forward, um, once those are identified, I think we could go back to every other month or quarterly, depending upon the types of things that'll need to be reviewed or considered and proposed.
I, I would suggest, I, you're working through that, but that at-large person could possibly come from county highway.
In addition to, yeah, both the highway superintendent and highway engineer.
I'm thinking more along the lines of sheriff or treasurer, somebody to get an outside point of view.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
Got ideas.
What would you, what would you, you want a motion on this?
Just to approve the committee members, um, and then I, we will bring this up in front of the Planning Commission at the next Planning Commission meeting. We'll have that on the agenda, so they can select a member. Um, and then we can.
And then we'll begin meeting. And then once the orders of business have been established, then we can bring those forward to this board.
Is there a motion to approve the road advisory committee composition and recommendations as presented? I'd so move, is there a second? And second by Commissioner Ross Connect, further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Wow.
A through Z.
You're not going to do that to us again, are you?
Oh, it might be AA or BB.
Thanks.
Oh.
Holly Hennies.
Commissioners, it's time to schedule your July planning work session. This board had voted earlier to move forward with having one in January and July. So in order for us to get the agenda set and the notice out, we would ask that you select the date you prefer in July, please.
Not Wednesdays. Thank you.
Not Wednesdays?
Please.
Well, they're both on Wednesdays.
Like every opposite Tuesday of a commission meeting or something, since we usually all have that marked off anyway, usually.
So the suggestions were both Wednesdays, July seventh and July twenty-first. So I'll have to look at my calendar.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd point out, at least on my calendar, I'm showing July seventh as a county work session. Unless that was an old one that I didn't remove off of my calendar, but.
That was yesterday.
July.
I think that was a previous one that we were.
Yeah.
We didn't formalize.
Oh, we didn't do, okay, so I need to take that off my calendar.
We could do Friday, the twenty-third possibly.
Tuesdays are good.
Friday, the twenty-third, does that work?
July, the twenty-third. Works for me.
Eight-thirty.
I don't know if I'll be there, but you guys can do it. Fridays are not good. And Tuesdays are good, Mondays are good.
Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, perfect.
I'm gone. I'm gone from, basically, I'm supposed to be gone from the twenty-third on, but I'd stay for the twenty-third if we can do, if we can, everybody else can do the twenty-third.
He's not going to be there, perfect. Just kidding. Geez, Nigga.
So what date did we determine?
Twenty-third and.
I can definitely do the twenty-third.
How early can we do it?
I got all day on the twenty-third.
Pardon me?
I got all day on the twenty-third, so.
How early can we start on the twenty-third?
We can start at eight.
Yeah. I would suggest eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock on the twenty-third?
Should you guys make an emotion to that?
I'd make the motion at eight o'clock on the July twenty-third for the planning work session.
Is there a second?
Second.
I've got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Lassiter for eight o'clock on July twenty-third.
I might not be there, but I'll be in the the, if we make the motion to do some of the changes for planning, I'll probably be ahead of that anyway with planning staff.
Further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, the second item is the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners proposed resolutions. I did reach out to the department heads and have not received any feedback yet for any requests or changes they would like to see. I did include in the packet the resolution for the infrastructure for counties that Commissioner Drews mentioned at the last meeting. And also, I also included a request for the board to submit a resolution to insert the word completed in the statute seven dash eighteen, eight dash sixteen, which is the time of filing of referendum for petitions. We've had issues with this in the past for Pennington County as we publish on two different days of the week. And by inserting the word completed, we would know exactly when to start counting the twenty days.
I think that's a good idea. Appreciate that, Holly. Any others, commissioners? So our next, our next meeting for the Black Hills Association of County Officials is July sixteenth. And so we'd want to submit anything that we have at that point in time to that body. Anything further? Any any comments relative to the suggestions so far? You want a motion on this, Holly?
I would like one on the referendum. And I guess also if the board wants to move forward, the infrastructure one as Pennington County, I can certainly prepare both of those resolutions for the next board meeting.
Can we do these both in in one?
You can.
So move.
I did a motion, I got one from Commissioner LaCroy, is there a second?
Second.
Who's second?
Ron.
Second from Commissioner Ross Connect. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Items from the commission members.
I have some.
Commissioner Hadcock.
Number one, I'm being working with Holly and Jay, or I'm sorry, Tracy from State's Attorney's Office, Bradzke's mayor, some of the council members. And we are bringing a resolution forward, if I'm correct, and Ms. Holly, on Pennsyls County Commission Resolution Recognizing Efforts to Support the Homeless Population and Encourage Giving to Local Charities. We're thinking about putting up signs that say no panhandling, but meaning that we'd like, we have a better solution, give to your local charities kind of sign. Have Ms. Celine Duhem will do a fifty-minute or three to five minutes, sorry, not fifty-minute. Basically saying that we have a better way to help people through supporting them through care campus and other areas. Meaning that the money would go further if given to a charity and knowledge, empathy and purpose in serving the homeless population in Pennington County. I think Tracy did an awesome job at this. Again, Helene will be doing a public announcement kind of to that effect. We are having problems in Rapid City and Pennington County with panhandling. And we just want to be able to kind of help in a way that would be a positive way to bring this forward and still encourage people basically not to give to panhandlers that there's a better way to help them. And it's bottom line, it's about the donors and the people giving instead of the panhandlers. And that's that's our position is if we can tell people that we can help, but you can't help if you keep giving money to people on the streets that have addictions and other issues that actually need our services. So that's our bottom line. So that will be coming forward at the next meeting, if I'm correct, Ms. Holly. And then the next issue is the bylaws of the Pennsyls County Building Committee. We met with Jay and Holly, me and Mike Cool. We're going to think about reducing the members on that building committee. We want it to make sure that it has a clear message of responsibilities and duties of that board, when meetings should do be, like have one meeting a month instead of two and then have meetings as needed after that, instead of having two meetings and going through the same stuff over and over again. We think it's more conducive to helping what's happening with buildings and grounds. Also, project prioritization processes on there instead of just coming up and saying, okay, this is what we're going to do. This just came up. So again, there's going to be some different composition and purpose to this committee moving forward. So we got a clear message of what we can do and where we're going in the future with building committee. So I think we've got a good start and hopefully we move it forward and you all agree that we can do it a different way and a more efficient way.
Commissioner Ross Connect, right?
Just items from the chair. We had a subsequent meeting with the Myman Group. We're doing some brainstorming on the sawmill property. They're receptive to, they got twenty-seven acres that are not under the ownership of Rushmore Forest Products. And I bet, I told them I'd meet with Jim Skoll. We'd go out there and see if we could take that twenty-seven acres and see what kind of development potential that would have relative to workforce housing. I met with Black Hills Energy yesterday relative to the, to their plans on how they're going to treat and subsidize folks that have solar. That's, I'm still learning on that one. I met with April with them in Luciehan and they want to do a garden for the, for the seniors. And they want to use water from the adjacent complex. That's owned by Pennington County Housing Redevelopment. They don't seem, we're trying to see out if they can, if they, if there's some way we can pull water. And where Deb and I got a meeting tomorrow with Pennington County Housing Redevelopment, so we can work on that tomorrow. And then as I, yesterday I noticed three or four places around Hill City that are going to be renting ATVs and I'm guessing a minimum of a hundred and twenty. So you put a hundred and twenty ATVs, they're going to end up on the Mystic Road for sure, a lot of them. And if you got a hundred and twenty and they do two cycles a day, I'm just anticipating some really rough conditions on some of our county roads. I've done everything I've can at this point to try to figure out a solution, but there may be toxic of meg water in the future, at least meg water in certain, certain areas if we have another dry summer like we did last year. That's all I got.
Okay. Few things I've got, I did have a Zoom call with Black Hills Energy relative to, Commissioner Lassiter brought this up at last meeting. They have filed with PUC a buy-all, sell-all for method relative to solar and and wind energy. They are proposing that existing electrical generators would be grandfathered in for for about twenty years relative to that. I would suggest if you really want information, you might reach out to them. We've asked them to come in and make a presentation here. They're not too eager to do that until after they've dealt with the filing at the PUC level. Also met with Joe Miller and Kuru and Box Elder relative to the raise grant proposed for fourteen sixteen and Radar Hill Road, essentially moving forward with a planning grant application this year within anticipation of a building grant. We did meet with Sheriff Tome and the auditor relative to, relative to having a person in Cindy's office tracking grants that the county currently are administering. And then had a kind of an initial discussion of having a grant writer to look for grants for other county departments. I went to the West Water, or West Dakota Water Development District meeting. They approved two erosion control projects to try to determine if economically they can revegetate some very exposed, explosive soils. One is at the LaCroy Disc Golf Course and the other, Deb, is property north of the Star Village where that, the area is all scarred there. Nothing inexpensive has ever been proposed to do. And so hopefully they, through this, these projects, maybe they'll be able to do something with those areas. I did attend the mayor's breakfast. He hosted legislators and I was invited to that. Discussion involved marijuana and housing study. That's going to go on during the interim for the legislature. Last Friday, we had the, I get, this is probably for, on the agenda later, I guess, so I won't do that yet. But yeah, that's all I have.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Relative to the medical marijuana, I asked you earlier, but if the county adopts an ordinance, a temporary ordinance, does that cover all the cities as well? And then the cities have to follow that. And if they want to do something more, they can do something more. But that's a question I'm getting asked and I don't know the, I don't have an answer.
Commissioner Ross Connect, my understanding is that each individual local government unit has the ability to regulate as they see fit within the confines of thirty-four twenty G. So for example, Rapid City could have one, we could have one, Hill City could have one, Wal could have one, the other municipalities here in Pennington County that escaped me, New Underwood.
So then the county would be, our jurisdiction would be everything in the county with exception of municipalities.
Correct.
Okay.
So Chairman, I would maybe suggest then with the sheriff and a couple of other people, maybe you and other mayors get together from other cities. So see if we can all get on the same page so the, we're kind of wanting the same thing and how we regulate it in a way that actually moves it in a consistent way is a good way to put it. That might be a good meeting for you to have with the other mayors in the sheriff's department.
Okay, thank you.
Just a suggestion.
Commissioner LaCroy.
You don't commit reports or?
No.
Oh, okay. The only thing I'd like to share is, you know, as you guys know, I was gone last week for a funeral and then I started, after that, went to work in Sioux Falls for about a week. And I just wanted to kind of share some of my experiences while while there last week because I'd been in Aberdeen, Brookings and Mitchell in Sioux Falls in those four days. And being able to see and appreciate what's happening in those communities as far as some of the development and some of the challenges that they're having and appreciating our ag industry being over by Brookings in those areas. A lot of that going on. The only thing I want to kind of share, it's great to be able to get out in those communities for more than just driving through. I used to just drive past them quite a bit, but being in them's good. One of the things Sioux Falls is challenging from one of the residents that told me is they're looking at, there's going to be three big businesses that are just starting in Sioux Falls that they're looking at like thirty-five-hundred jobs, from my understanding.
They got the workforce?
That's going to be a challenge, just as we're having here. I mean, they're going to have the same challenge. They got the Amazon distribution and two other ones that are going to be starting. So we're going to be seeing this in the South Dakota and a lot of the migration coming here. So I just wanted to kind of share that after being able to sit back in some of those areas. At one part of Sioux Falls, one area that I worked, was working at, the firsthand of the challenges of the mentally challenged people that we have in our community. I mean, it's, it's not just here, it's there and being able to see that going on. We're not isolated, it's happening quite a bit. So I just kind of wanted to share that challenge. It's been a while since I've been out, out of town, but that's the most time I've spent in Sioux Falls for quite a while in those areas.
So Lloyd, do they have a kind of a crisis care center there, you know?
They're, they're working on, yeah, the crisis care, that's exactly what they're calling it. I, I don't know if they have that started up yet or not. They came here and toured and they've been looking at that, but they have other stuff going on. I was there more for work than checking out stuff, but I just wanted to share some of the individuals, one of the places I was working at, that location is really challenged for the, the police department gets a lot of calls to that area, calls for service. And so you get to see that going on just as long as here, so.
So four eastern South Dakota communities in four days. I trust they didn't ask you to leave after that?
Well, that might have been true, but.
Commissioner Lassiter.
So I took about a two-week vacation with COVID. So I didn't do quite a lot in the last couple of weeks. However, yesterday I was just contacted by the Wal Economic Development Group out that way about a industrial, certified industrial park in western South Dakota. And so I'm going to be heading out. And so I'm going to be heading out there on Friday to take a tour and get an overview of it. I did send Holly an email to send out to the commissioner, so you all can get a, kind of an overview before going out there. But I'm going to go out there and take a look and see what their overall plan is, and then I'll bring that back to the commission and see what they're looking for, see what kind of help they're looking for, and things of that nature. But it looks like it's a, you know, just on the preliminary, preliminary look, they wanting to, you know, focus on moving some of their landlocked ag businesses up closer to the interstate and bring in some new business in, right there on I-90 next, near the airport. So that's just the preliminary that I've got from it, and I'll let you know more outside of that.
Okay, committee reports. Commissioner Lassiter, start with you.
I was not at any of my committees. I think I had somebody fill in for me, and I think Holly, or the individual knows who filled in for me at each meeting that I missed, though.
Commissioner La Croix.
I've only got one. I, you know, at the previous meeting, I forgot to give a report about the Public Defenders meeting, but we have another one of them this Friday for the budget part of it. But that's where I was talking about, they, they may be doing the satellite, they're looking at a satellite office, because they are short on employees too, so. I have more to report after Friday. The other meeting I attended was just last night, and that was the Pennington County Extension Advisory Board meeting, which we actually met in person finally. So hopefully we're starting to get more back into in-person meetings than just these Zoom meetings. And most of the business on there was typical 4H or vans. They're getting ready for the, you know, looking out for the fair that's going to be coming. They think that's going to be a really big year this year. They also went over their 2021 budget, and we also went over the 2022 budget, and the board approved it to, to bring to us as a commission during budget time. So that's really about all I have to report on.
Okay. Yesterday I did serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission, gave first reading to the moratorium on IM26, the medical marijuana. This moratorium is to allow the State Department of Health to promulgate rules and regulations prior to it coming to us. And then the other thing that, that I had is, Holly and Lloyd and some of the other county officials were there, was the Black Hills District County officials. This was held near Ogalala in Ogalala, Lakota County. Stacy Martin, the GIS Coordinator for Fall River County, gave an interesting presentation on soil ratings for pasture or crop lands, said the new ratings will go into effect next year or, or in two years. And so there's going to have to be considerable work, depending on how that impacts each county, probably considerable work in regard to what those new soil ratings are going to do. The other thing we did is some of us took advantage of a, of an invite to go through their Justice Center at Pine Ridge, which includes a jail, can house 88 individuals, there are three courts rooms that they have there. It was a good tour of the facility, and just appreciated the opportunity to be able to do that, so. That's all I've got. Commissioner Roskinak.
Well, I was on vacation part of that two weeks, but I did make the last building committee. We talked about the Highway Salt Shed Project, which is moving right along. When that's complete, we're going to have a building that's going to be 80 by 140. I'm sure Joe's going to be happy to get that one done, so we can keep the salt dry. Crisis Care Stabilization Building, I think they're, we're in the design process, and it looks like there will be a bid in early fall. Public Safety Building Remodel, looks like maybe a cost of $250,000, and that would probably be a split 50/50 with the city and the county. Fairgrounds Barn Four Reconstruction. We indicated that we'd be back to get that done sooner than later, and I think that's moving along, last I heard, we'll have an update today. Courthouse Perimeter Tunnel, I've never been in the tunnel, I've seen pictures, but it's got some issues. They're talking 1600,000, 28, just 28,000 for the study. My suggestion is just to keep it from caving in, but not have to get in, not, not totally rebuild something that we, we don't know that we're ever going to use. Lamp lighter, we talked about that, we're going to go ahead and, and it looks like we'll move ahead and do the demo and, and convert that to a parking lot, which is probably a good thing, because we made that decision a couple of meetings ago, because it's already starting to get broke into, and that's one thing we didn't, we didn't want that to happen. And now we've, we got the two new projects, we got Property Mold and Elements, and I think we ought to, it's important to keep Saint Joel Street, the, well, the lamp lighter just wouldn't fit, wouldn't fit in with those two projects, so. Think we're moving, we're going the right direction. That's pretty much all I got for the building.
Right, guard.
First I have Ron covered building committee, so Fire Service Board, basically a lot of training going on. We talked about the fireworks update, the burn ban, we met at Station 1, so they fed us at Station 1, so that was pretty cool. It's always nice to go to different stations. Just same stuff we usually talk about, like I said, about training and budget is coming up, so they're talking about budget and what they might need for capital costs and operational costs, so. Looks like we're staying pretty steady on our, on the fire board, on fires board money, except for, we'll need more money for capital costs. And Pennington County Housing Authority, met with Brian Alkbach in between, I'm the chair right now, acting chair, until we elect a board by bylaws in July. So we went through some of the goals of what he and his staff thought would be good for moving forward. He is having a few issues with finding people. They've asked some of the residents if they'd like to work as maintenance people and different things, and that's not working so well yet. So we're still looking for three other people in two maintenance and one administrative. And then also looking at his healthcare. We are going to be at this meeting this time and looking at what they have now and what he's going to suggest now, but I told him to look into the future, because I think they're deductible, it's like 8,600, or they finally went down to like 6,900. So I asked him to talk to John Morrell here and look at our healthcare at Pennington County Housing Authority, because they have like 33 employees, so I don't know how big you have to be, but it's kind of interesting. They do work very hard, and as you know, if we want to expand that horizon into helping more people under disability and veterans and elderly, that's going to have to be moved forward with more employees and hopefully a positive healthcare system. The other thing I wanted to mention was they're having a fundraiser this Thursday at 5:00 for Kevin Schmidt. He had triple bypass surgery. He is one of our great volunteers at the, at the fairgrounds, and that should be positive. Again, they're having some team roping and some silent auctions and different stuff. I worked with his wife for years, Patty at JCPenney's, and she was a booth renter of mine, and then went out on her own. Just a great family, and like I said, Kevin's one of those volunteers, a member volunteer that has always helped at the fairgrounds for years. So anything we can do to help him on Thursday would be pretty awesome. Thank you, sir.
Very good. I need approval of the vouchers, need a motion to approve the voucher in the amount of $200 to the Rose N LLC.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Hadcock will be abstaining on this. I've got a motion by Commissioner La Croix. Commissioner Lassiter, is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Roskinak. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried with Commissioner Hadcock abstaining. Second motion I need is to approve the remaining vouchers in the amount of $4,826,052.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Lassiter, second by Commissioner La Croix. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Items for Highway, Joe Miller.
First I want to say thanks, Holly, for allowing us to get this on the agenda. Thank you. I know I was late notice on Thursday, so I appreciate that. This amendment basically covers all the, the work that has gone into recertifying the, the environmental aspects and the design changes that have taken place over the last year on South Rochford Road. Also includes the, the hours that interstate engineering has put into our biweekly meetings that have moved this project forward to where it's, it's gotten to now. This is a match from the county, so the county's responsible for 18.05% or $57,653.64 of the $319,000. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hadcock.
Motion to request to approve Amendment Number Two to Work Order LGA-36-17 under Agreement Number 410651, Project EM 640306, PCN 00CL.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hadcock, second by Commissioner Lassiter. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Items from the public. I do have speaker request form from William Baker. Is he, Mr. Baker still in the audience?
We have an item on the table still.
Yes, I was going to say that, too. The planning meeting.
Yes, okay. So I take a motion to take that off the floor.
So moved.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second to take the item for composition, basically of the work, working group with Planning Commission off the floor. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. So I'm going to recommend that Commissioners Roskinak and Hadcock serve on this working group, along with Janelle from Fisk, and what's the name of the other servant?
Long Branch, Kale.
Long Branch, Kale?
I think it's Kale.
That we ask Kale if he would also serve on that, along with staff from the Planning Commission.
Chairman, if we could, I know Roskinak's is on a lot of committees already, but maybe have Commissioner Lassiter, me, Commissioner Lassiter is on planning, and actually has went through a lot of this stuff more thoroughly than we have, without trying, I'm not trying to be rude to Commissioner Roskinak, but Commissioner Lassiter, I think, would be a better fit on the other second on that, if.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
As I've stated earlier, 35 years of appraising real estate, every piece of property that I appraise, I have to identify the zoning, and I really feel that I'm a good fit for this. I've been, and I've requested that when we have variances, I want to know how many happen in District 1, because I can't express how many phone calls I get and how much time I spend on them, each one of those items, and I'm very adamant to be on that committee.
I agree. Further discussion.
Not trying to disagree, but you're on a lot of committees, Ron, and I think Lassiter, if you want to be with Lassiter on that, that would probably be good, then I'm good with that, because I think he'd be valuable on this, and he's now on a lot of committees where he's learning more stuff and he has the experience, so if he wants to be on that with Roskinak, I'm okay with that.
Obviously, we can't have three on it. Commissioner Lassiter, do you have feelings on this?
I would be willing to serve, so.
So I would suggest then that Commissioner Lassiter and Commissioner Roskinak serve on that, along with the others that were mentioned, and work with the Planning Department. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Lassiter. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Need a motion to go into executive session.
Move to go in the executive session.
We got a motion by Commissioner Roskinak, second by Commissioner La Croix. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. I need a motion to go back into regular session.
I'll move to go back to regular session.
Got a motion, is there a second? And a second?
I'll let, I'll let Sandy.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, Sandy.
Okay, our first motion is to move Christina Runz against to a B 25, Step 8, at 3013 per hour, and Lisha Smith to B 25, Step 8, 3013 per hour, effective May 16 of 2021.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second, further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Motion two is to move Joanna Kneckney to B 25, Step 10, 3087 per hour, and Nicole Winkler to B 25, Step 10, 3087 per hour, Jordan Nelson to B 25, Step 9, 3050 per hour, and Laura Anderson to C 42, Step 3, 3131 per hour, effective May 16 of 2021.
Is there a motion? Got a motion by La Croix, is there a second? By Hadcock, further discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner La Croix.
I'd make a motion and request to the Board of Commissioners to write a signature for right-of-way acquisition on parcel 58 in the amount of $31,000.
Second. And a second by Commissioner Roskinak. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
Second.
Say, Holly?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
And I seconded.
Oh, I didn't hear it.
Yeah, you said motion to adjourn, and I said second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.